Everybody's here, let's get started. Immers Media, are you ready?
I heard a tap.
Okay. Hello and welcome everybody to the August 1st meeting of the Immers Planning Board. The first item on our agenda tonight is to approve the minutes of July 18th, 2012. And I don't think we have them.
Mr. Chair, I apologize for not preparing the minutes. I was on vacation last week and just didn't have time, but they will be ready for the 15th.
No worries at all. Thank you. And I hope you had a great vacation. All right, we'll move directly onto our special appearance tonight. We have very special guests, Rob Mora, the Building Commissioner, John Thompson, our new Code Enforcement Officer, and Julie Federman, the Health Director. They're here with us tonight to discuss the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, Code Enforcement, Rental Registration, Best Practices for Leases, and Enforcement of Conditions of Site Plan Review and Special Permits, and anything else we can throw at them. So, we're really glad that you're able to come tonight. If you have a presentation for us, or if you want to speak in order, just feel free, well, just come on up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Julie Federman, I'm the Health Director. So, in the background is a handout that I think probably all of you have, has the four green circles on it. That would be the town name, I'm sure you've seen it before. So, I thought I'd start with a overview of Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods. Over the past eighteen months to two years, the town started bringing together staff from several different departments to start looking at our goals, our concern for rental housing and neighborhoods looking at. So, we've got together building inspections, fire inspections, health, town management office, IT, and EMAS to start looking at what the issues are with rental housing in Immers, and what our goals are. So, we quickly realized that our goal and our objectives is to have safe and healthy neighborhoods, safe and healthy buildings, safe and healthy streets. And then we began to look at what tools we already have to accomplish that end goal of Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods. So, we began looking at all of our regulations, including zoning, zoning regulations, health code, health department enforces the state sanitary code, and also nuisances, fire code, building code. But one of the things that we started to do was to think about how to look at all of these things together, rather than in the past where, for instance, there might be a fire call, a fire would go in, and apply their code to a property. We began to start meeting together and start educating each other about, first of all, what each discipline was looking at, and how we might be able to work together in a more efficient manner. Out of this, bringing together of the different disciplines, we created the Code Enforcement position, which John Thompson built. He started full-time in June, and that has been a really exciting addition to our ability to use the tools that we already have to enforce code in town. One of the other things we started doing was really increasing the communication between departments. So, now, when police and fire are out, and they're our eyes, and there's 24 hours a day, they're notifying us when they're out in the neighborhoods, in buildings, on off-hours, and then letting code enforcement know during the daytime what we need to go out and evaluate, things that they've seen on the off shifts. And that also has been a real change in how we operate in the past, and has really increased our capacity to be inside our buildings and see what's going on there, what needs to be brought up to code. This is particularly important because the way housing is maintained is essentially complaint-based. So, that complaint comes from through an occupant, landlord, neighborhood, but it can also come from other town staff, and that's the piece that we have really increased over time. And IT has also been part of conversations, so that we've been maximizing how we can use technology to make our work a lot more efficient. Right now, we're looking at designing a website for Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods, a way for landlords, tenants, town residents to be aware of all of the bylaws and codes that are involved with rental housing, and also a way for people to be able to contact with the department if they have some hidden concern about a building or something. We also began to look at what we already had available to us to start really focusing on enforcing, so that we can improve things as quickly as possible. So, last fall, one of the things we looked at was the fact that upholstered furniture and mattresses were a really good problem in this town, as it is in many university college towns. So, we did a mailing to landlords, and we did certain streets where we had a history of infractions in that area, letting new tenants know, and letting landlords know that upholstered furniture and mattresses would no longer be allowed outside properties, including on decks and porches, and that there would be a stiff line that would go along with that. And over this past four years, both semesters, we saw marked improvements in that. Over the course of the first month of September, going into October of 2011, basically all the furniture was removed from porches. We still occasionally have problems, we see them, we address it, and it's sweeping across. Another thing that we've worked on in the past year and a half is coordinating with EMAS to do some educational initiatives, offering workshops to landlords. EMAS offers programs in the spring and in the fall for landlords and for new tenants. So, we've done some educational opportunities around preventing bedbugs, and around, at the same time, around what all of our codes and bylaws are that relate to rental housing. We've also participated for the past couple of years in the EMAS Off-Campus Housing Fair. Again, that gives us an opportunity to interact with some of our landlords in town, and some of our potential new, new, resident young people. We also participated in some of EMAS's outreach events in the fall to go door-to-door to neighborhoods, delivering information about how to live off-campus safely, and sort of the responsibilities, and also the rights of being a new tenant. And that's outlined in this syllabus, but there are a few of those out back, out on the table. We also, this spring, attempted a mailing to all of our landlords, anticipating the move-out issues that we had, playing out a lot of household goods and trash appearing on our streets, and asked them to think proactively about how they could address that. Again, we saw a decrease in the amount of trash that was on the streets after this semester. So, as we try out different tools and different education pieces, we're evaluating what will work, what doesn't work. One of the ongoing issues for neighborhoods in towns, the fact that we constantly have very new tenants in town who are just not used to renting, and they need some support and education around how to live in the neighborhoods. And so, that will be something we'll be working on again very closely with EMAS this year, with the Off-Campus Housing. EMAS also has a new office, I'm going to get the name a little bit incorrect, but commuter services. And as part of that, they have a dedicated office for students who live off-campus, a space at the campus center. And they also have, I believe it is six student positions for people who are students who live off-campus in various neighborhoods, who will be sort of ambassadors, ombudsmen to off-campus students, helping them to negotiate living in the neighborhoods with their families, learning to be a tenant in a house where you haven't had to handle all the responsibilities of managing a household. And so, we're looking forward to also working closely with EMAS in developing that program and doing some educational outreach with those student ambassadors. I don't want to say too much, we don't want to leave time for John Thompson, but as I look at the agenda for tonight, I wanted to address a couple of items on there. When we're looking at sample leases, we didn't come tonight with suggestions around leases. We're still looking at best practices and gathering information about what makes a really good solid lease, so that in the future we can share that with landlords. In terms of what we're able to enforce, we don't so much enforce leases as enforce code. But we're thinking that this is the kind of way in which we can be helpful to landlords, is to sort of survey what's out there, what landlords found, what type of lease to be really a good educational tool for the tenant, and also something that clearly states the responsibilities, the contact information, the expectations for renters. The other thing that was mentioned in the agenda was conditions for site plan review and special permit approvals. I think this is a first visit for us to the planning board, and we look forward to coming back again with some of that information. I don't feel like we have specifics like that for yet. We're looking at things around the state, we're looking at things in various other states that have worked well. We're trying out some really interesting and possibly very effective tools, but we're still at the point where we're trying to pick out those things that would be most effective in this community. And so, we don't have any specific examples to bring forward to tonight. In terms of rental registration, I just wanted to touch on that and say, we are, it's just about in the process to send out a letter that will go to all residential property owners, talking about what rental registration is. Rental registration is a board health regulation that requires you to register your rental property, and contact information for who the owner is and who the manager is, and where the property is located. Usually, there's a $10 fee per unit for that, we're going to be waiving that for a certain period of time, so we can really just gather all that information that at this point is not very up to date. And that way, every person who owns residential property in Immers will be aware of their rental registration program, and we will be able to update our current records about where properties are, and who is the most currently managed. But when we do, we need to get that educational materials, and contact a landlord or a management company, we have that information relatively accessible. The more long-term initiative that we're really researching is the concept of preventive inspections. That's something that happens in many communities in Massachusetts and many other states across the country. So, again, we're looking at how to have a program like that in this town where we have so many rentals that turn over at the same time. And we're looking at creating some form of tiered system that we would be able to manage effectively. And so, we will at some point be bringing that forward, and the details of what that might look like. So, now I think I'll pass it on to John Thompson.
Thank you very much, Ms. Federman. We appreciate your, especially addressing the issues that were listed on the agenda. It's really intended, as you said, to be a starting point for a conversation between us about what we can do to start improving things. So, thank you very much. Mr. Thompson?
Hi, I'm John Thompson, I'm the new enforcement officer for inspections. The inspector-enforcer position was modeled on the same kind of position that the city Marlborough took. The Marlborough Inspector came here and worked with the group to try to set this up. When I first started working in this position, I was working part-time one day, and April I went down to Marlborough, it was after day with a family, the Marlborough Inspector and Shadower, just following her around through the day to give an idea of what kind of issue she was looking at, and how that might work this time. I've got an example of a few cases that I've been working, these are things that I've actually worked in closed. This spring, there was a party over on College Street that got a little out of hand, and there was a police response to it, and fire went in and realized that the building was, had too many occupants in it in front of the party, they had collapsed, they were living on the floor. They cleared the house and sealed the site, and on Monday morning, the building inspections, fire, and health all went there, and, you know, did an order to correct. And while we were inside, we found a few other violations, and we worked with the landlord on getting that site back to code compliant, and he's done pretty good job, and it's ready to rent again. We did a, I got a call recently, I'm sure, from the parents of a student in an apartment in one of the complexes here, they told me that there was water pouring out of the ceiling in this apartment, and we went and looked at, and there was gallons of water pouring through the ceiling. I guess the roof was, the water collected in the attic for a while, and so we finally talked about the driveway first through.
Excuse me, could you hold the mic for a second?
Is that better?
Oh...
Is that working now? You want it?
Little Jimi Hendrix for you.
We'd like to do a song off our first album now.
So, we went by the apartment and verified that water was pouring through the ceiling. We actually condemned that apartment, the kids had to relocate. I'm going back next week to look at the repair that they've done, I believe re-roofed the whole unit, and I think are re-roofing all the units in that complex. We went recently for a wellness check in one of the neighborhoods here in town, a house that looked like it had been abandoned, but in fact had someone still living in it. There were numerous code violations there, and we issued an order to correct. The person who owns the home lives in California and had been away for quite a long time, really didn't know what the state of the place was, but emailed some photos to her, and she's gotten in touch with some contractors, the place is being fixed up, we're starting to feel a lot better about it. Another kind of typical case, parents deliver their kids to their new apartment for the new year, and walk into the house and go, "Oh, my gosh," and call for help. Right down here in the Tambrook neighborhood, we visited a house and found numerous health code violations, and in fact, this property's, all of these have been corrected, so I can share some of them with you. The front door had been kicked in, the jam was broken, you were not able to close the door any longer. There were some missing ballisters, exposed wiring, broken glass, missing screens, asbestos in the closets that was chipping off, and also in the basement, the front hall carpet, you wouldn't even recognize that it was a carpet. And all of the heating registers were filthy. All of that was written up in an order to correct, and within 30 days, we went back and inspected, and it had all been fixed, the place looked great. I say that there's no shortage of work for me to do here. I've been on the job for, since the middle of June, and I've got 22 open cases.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. We appreciate your hard work. Mr. Mora, did you have anything to say tonight?
Rob Mora, Building Commissioner, good evening. Be very brief, you know, Julie gave you the big picture and what Safe and Healthy Initiative is all about. I just wanted to mention that I'm looking forward to working with the planning board, and certainly your staff here, on working on the zoning bylaw, and the regulations that we need to actually get out there and have clear, concise direction, and make any effort to enforce those regulations. John and I are, you know, focusing on that one little piece of the Safe and Healthy Initiative, which is enforcement and how to tackle that. And as Julie mentioned, the critical piece for us right now is to understand what we're dealing with, get that rental registration in order, so we know the number of units we're dealing with, and, you know, how we're going to approach such a monumental task like that, and what staffing and what resources we need to dedicate towards that. So, that's really the big focus for us for the rest of this year. But we're happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mora. One of the things that, actually, the primary focus of planning board's rezoning efforts this fall is going to be trying to work on rental registration, not just registration, but anything else we can do to try and help with exactly the problems that you're talking about with residential rentals. And it's our hope that we'll be able to go, you know, to help and to have your input in crafting definitions and rules within the zoning code that can help you do what you need to do. So, please don't hesitate to contact planning board staff and through them us with anything you think we can do. We have a lot of articles, I think we're going to be discussing some of them later tonight, that we're probably going to be bringing to Fall Town Meeting. And we want them to be useful, and moving things forward towards exactly the kind of thing that you're talking about. At this point, I'll ask if you're willing to stick around a little while for a little Q and A, we'd love to, I'm sure there are people who'd love to ask you some questions. So, I'll start just with members of the planning board, if anybody wants to, has questions. Mr. Carson?
I just have a couple of questions about, just to get a sense of what your day is like, and how it goes. So, I was interested in particularly the code enforcement officer, what the ratio of building code to zoning bylaw cases is, if you have a sense, and also the ratio of student-related cases to general public-related cases, if you have a sense of that.
I haven't seen a lot of student-related cases yet, because I'm just on in June, so, you know, the kids are still away. Building code versus zoning, it's more, I wouldn't say I've seen that much, many zoning issues at this point. It's building code and health code is what I'm seeing, and being knighted as an agent of the Board of Health, I'm able to enforce both of those when I'm in somewhere. Does that help?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Maybe you'd like to take the microphone out of there, and you can sit and pass it back and forth, so you're not jumping up. I sense that Mr. Mora has something he wants to say.
Thank you. Just add to that, right now, and as John just came onboard June 18th, we're trying to divide up the workload in a way that makes sense for us, and to phase John into this new role. I generally deal with a lot of the zoning issues. If they're directly related to a housing matter, John's been assisting on those also, so there's been a few, a handful. I spend most of my time throughout the day dealing with zoning matters, whether it's enforcement, interpretation, or just review of upcoming cases or issues. And I'm quite busy on following up on older violations that have been around, and they seem to pop up regularly.
Mr. Carson?
If a neighbor would call you and say, "I'm seeing more than four cars parked next door," which is such a common occurrence, what is your procedure? Do you monitor the house for a while in case that was just a one-time-only experience, or do you, how do you follow up with that?
Exactly. We've had a few of these cases in my short time here, and that's exactly what we do. We try to get a solid understanding that it's not just a, you know, weekend event or a one-time issue. So, you know, we document the cars, license plates, their positioning photographs, and once we're comfortable with that it is a regular occurrence, then we reach out to the owner and try that friendly enforcement action, you know, that friendly discussion for, try to get voluntary compliance. And it's worked a couple of times so far here, and then, you know, if that's not it, then we move forward in our procedures for formal action.
Thank you.
So, I had a question about the mattresses and couches, and I have to say, I did notice, I live in a university neighborhood, and I really did notice improvement this year.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so thank you very much. But the, I've also looked high and low through the Immers bylaw and through the state sanitary code, and I can't find anything that explicitly mentions that those are illegal. So, if you could shine a light on that.
Yes. The reason we came to the conclusion that this was something that we just couldn't have anymore in Immers, came out of something called Campus Watch. Campus Watch is actually located in Belcher Town, but it's a national organization that looks at fire issues in campuses. And through their research, they found that in university college towns, the occurrence of fatal fires was directly linked to upholstered furniture that was on porches and decks, because what they were finding was fires would be occurring out there at night, trapping people inside. So, health code, or boards of health in Massachusetts, get their power directly from the legislature. So, if we identify something that is truly a life safety issue, we can go ahead and decide to act on that, and that's what we did. Yeah. And the other thing is, there's mass general law that we also can enforce. And so, what we do is, we give people a notice to abate a nuisance. So, we're also looking at this as quote-unquote "a nuisance." Nuisance can be many different things, but it can be a public safety hazard, such as upholstered furniture. Because you are correct, there isn't specifically a town bylaw that specifically addresses that. But through the powers of the Board of Health, we are able to make that decision on our own.
So, what about the, I know that the state sanitary code says that trash can only be put on the curb, you know, the day before, and taken off, you know, has to be removed the day after, regular trash pickup or whatever it is. So, what about like the free piles? So, in the move-out season, you know, a lot of this stuff appears with the sign "Free." So, is it trash, is it goodwill?
Right.
Yeah. And so, sometimes the free stuff stays there for months. No, not anymore.
Not anymore. No, we're certainly, another thing that we initiated, starting about two and a half years ago now, is we do drive-throughs through town, through certain areas where habitually there are issues like this. So, on Monday morning, we're driving through as much as we can, unless there's some kind of emergency, and so, we're noticing where that stuff is, we're contacting them, we're going to the door. So, certainly, things should not be hanging out for weeks or months at a time. And really, we invite everyone who's watching on TV and everyone here to just give us a call at any of our departments, but especially the Health Department, to let us know about trash or items that are out at curbs, because they shouldn't be there. That being said, we're still... out at curbs because they shouldn't be there. That being said, we're still looking at, is there something more that can be done to prevent, especially on move-out, these big piles, pileups of free items. And again, we're looking at what some other communities have done to try and address that. As I said, this year, our first step was sending out a letter to landlords, you know, reminding them that it is their responsibility, that stuff should not be sitting out there. Because really, when there's a pile that says "free," that does count as trash. You know, if something's out for three hours, I've been known to put something at the end of my driveway for just a couple hours, someone takes it, great. But, you know, if it's longer than that, then it turns into trash.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fetterman. Yes, Ms. Anderson?
My observation with those free things is that most people wouldn't touch them with a ten-foot pole. My question is to anybody on the team, is there anything that we can do as a Planning Board to help you, you know, when you're out in your job, you're looking, you're seeing things, you would like to be able to point to a rule, a bylaw, a regulation, something that says, boy, if we could only, there's something that we would like to address, but we really don't have anything to point to above, you know, the state and code sorts of things, the buildings, the structure, the fire safety. But when it comes to new types of people, I don't want to just say students all the time, but folks who are not necessarily used to maintaining, maybe it's a home, a single-family home, which we're seeing a lot of, not so much department complexes, which have trash issue, they've already got some procedures in place. But, you know, a lot of the houses that maybe were real estate properties and now they're rentals. Is there anything that you could point to or as we go through looking at bylaws, as we hear from the public, as we do site plan reviews, we're looking at parking, we're looking at lighting, we're looking at trash, snow removal, things like that. I don't know if that's too vague or...
No, and I'm absolutely sure you will be able to do something. And as we, you know, work through these examples and these cases that are coming up in the first few months of John and I being here, we are definitely going to get that message out to your professional staff so that they can relay what we believe, if there are any holes or any gaps that need to be filled, or anything that would give us, you know, that little extra that we need to cite something and be on good legal ground. So we intend that that will come very soon as we work through these.
All right. Yes.
Hi. Thanks for coming tonight. And we've already begun as a board to be quite engaged in discussions about neighborhood health and safety issues. So I think we share a lot of common ground. One of the things that I've experienced, I haven't been on the board that long and I'm very new to the zoning subcommittee, people have come in from some of the downtown neighborhoods with sort of experiences that they've shared that I think have really made an impression on me and probably I'm going to say the rest of the board, their experience of deterioration of quality of life in some of the traditional neighborhoods. And I know you're aware. And when we talk about the rental registration process, and I understand that you're, you know, there's budget issues, staffing issues, how to design it, it's a complicated thing. And it's failed a couple of times to get political support in the past. But what I hear people saying is we want a system where someone's renting commercially and there's a number of violations of town bylaws, they could lose their standing to engage in that commercial activity. And I know we're not there yet, but I think from my perspective, we're really interested in being able to pursue a system that has real enforcement. And I think, as Ms. Fetterman said, the education and working with new renters, that's all great. In the best possible of worlds, that would be enough. But the stories that we've been hearing have been quite extreme. And some of those renters really don't care about the flyer in the mail or whatever. And, you know, and it's maybe a small number. But I think we're looking to participate in developing a system that will really have strong enforcement potential. Because we're stuck on a lot of zoning initiatives that we'd like to do because we don't have our arms around how to control the renter issues that are up right now.
I wanted to respond to that because as you began to speak, you mentioned rental registration. So I want to do a little semantic thing here. So rental registration, which is a regulation that was passed in 2003, is merely a database. Where are the rentals? And who is in charge? Who owns them and who manages them? So, and I just want to make this clear partly for everyone else. So as we do this mailing that I was referencing and try to gather, once again, all the most current information about where our rental properties are, that is essentially data. So what you're referring to would be some type of pre-rental inspection, certification, permitting program. And that's what I was referencing early, that earlier that many towns have and that many places across the country have. So that's, we're in agreement here. That's what we're looking at developing. We'll be coming back to you with what type of program like that would work well in Amherst. Parts of that would be a, so I'm forgetting that people may not understand what that might look like. So the concept would be that in order to rent in Amherst, you would need to fill out an application. Your property would have to be inspected so that it met minimal standards of fitness for habitation, building code, fire code, so that there would be this level playing field that, you know, this property started out with all the, meeting all the minimal standards. And along with that, we may be looking at, there would be some type of management plan for parking and for trash. And so what we're looking at now is language that's already been developed in other communities, because there are many different types of programs like this. And again, what do, we think we could essentially borrow from verbiage from other communities that would work well here? And then how would we implement that, given the fact that we have so many rentals and they turn over so frequently and at the same time? So again, we're having to look at some type of tiered system. Because again, we also have a lot of really good rental situations in this town. Very good landlords who are maintaining their properties well. And so we want to come up with a system so that the properties that we're getting into perhaps on a yearly basis are those that really need that kind of support to maintain minimal standards. Whereas the properties that are already being managed well will get some type of, a different level of certification so that we're not needing to go in there as frequently. And then, along with that would be the concept that should someone then not be maintaining as good as a status as they were, then they would lose that level of certification. And we would then be going back in again, making sure that everything was within code compliance.
Is that something that needs change of bylaws at all? Or can you do that within the scope of the Health Department, Building Code Enforcement Department?
We would be looking at a general bylaw for that.
Yes, Mr. Crowder?
Do you have a sense of the timeline for a rollout of this? And a couple of other questions. Have you gotten any public input on developing this process? We've heard, we've gotten a lot in the zoning subcommittee, a lot of information from concerned citizens about these rental permitting programs in other places. And they're interesting. One of the, so for instance, one of the things that I've noticed is that a lot of them charge a lot more than $10.
Yes.
And so is that going to be?
Well, again, I really think it's important to differentiate between a rental registration program, which is merely a database. So the concept in 2003 of there being a $10 fee for that was appropriate to just a simple data collection system. A pre-inspection program would be, would cost more than that and would in fact fund the at least full-time position that would be needed to do pre-rental inspections. So there are communities that charge $50 for a pre-rental inspection, 75, I think maybe I've seen 100 to 125. So yes, and again, it's very different. So what will happen is, once we developed some type of pre-rental certification program, rental registration would just be enveloped into that. Because of course, it would be all about where is the property, what's the parcel number, who is the property manager? And so that would all be incorporated into this larger program.
Yeah. So also a sense of the rollout, because
Yeah.
as Connie mentioned, we're sort of paralyzed in that we can't do other planning that we want to do because we're just hostage to this problem.
Yes.
So we want to have a sense of when it's going to be resolved or when it might start being...
Yes. We have been looking at this for quite some time now. And I think the earliest we would be looking at would be bringing it to Springtown Meeting. Again, it's something that we want to get right and we want to have it really fit this community. And it's a little complex, given all the different types of rentals we have and the number of rentals that we have, which is, I won't say unique. There are other communities that we've looked at, Stores Mansfield, Connecticut, University of Connecticut, very similar. But so in terms of a rollout, possibly Springtown Meeting. The other thing, the other question you had was, have we been getting input from other folks in the community? And we have been doing that. In fact, some of them I think are here. We've, you know, had folks come to our offices and meet with us. And frankly, we've gotten a lot of help from town residents who've been doing some research themselves and then pointing it our way, which has been very helpful. And I think we want to continue that with some other neighborhood groups that we haven't interacted with. We've also just begun speaking with some of our landlords and property owners in town too, to get their feedback on, you know, what is going to work and the different perspectives on this issue.
Yes, Mr. Schreiber?
So just along those lines, I am curious though, because rental registration's actually seems like a great kind of starter permitting. It's good news that we have that on the books because then it should make this, you know, sort of upgraded version of rental permitting easier. But I am curious that it sounds like it's not enforced. So it is a law, right? But it's not enforced.
Well, this was a Board of Health regulation that was passed in 2003. At that time, a lot of effort went into gathering that information, which again, is basically data and which, because it's not tied to an inspection or tied to a permit, it's difficult to keep that up to date and keep that coming. So recently, what we've been doing is upon complaint, upon having any kind of interaction with an occupant or a landlord, we're checking to see, is that property registered? And when it's not, we're then getting the property owner to register the property.
Okay, so is it?
So I think by definition, the way it was written, it's a difficult thing to enforce. And again, you know, that's partly what the question was here is what things can be written that then are enforceable. And I think that's a really key part of anything that gets created, is to then actually have that be a usable, enforceable tool.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fetterman. Go ahead, Ms. Anderson, and then I want to move on to just taking a few questions from the public.
Okay. It was just going to be an observation. What we've heard a lot from the public in our meetings about houses that were previously owner-occupied, typical traditional single-family homes in residential neighborhoods that have become a rental for some reason. And what would keep me, if I was taking my single-family home, just decided I was going to rent it, you know, what makes me come to Town Hall and register it, you know, if I didn't care to or anything? I mean, I guess it's the same thing. It's voluntary now to register your rental. There's no punishment, there's no, all of a sudden, it just goes from owner-occupied to rental and nobody knows the difference. I guess maybe this would come with a renter certification program that includes inspection, that has some teeth in it, that has some monetary fine or something that happens if you don't play by the rules, I guess.
Yes. I mean, there do have to be consequences for something that's not complied with. I mean, frankly, this is one of the issues of bringing anything into compliance with any type of code or bylaw or regulation. It's not always simple because it's not like you're out there, you know, with tons of people trolling the streets, being able to tell where violations are occurring. So just as with this, it's hard for us to know when something isn't registered. So anything that is linked to an inspection or a permit, so an example would be all of our restaurant businesses in town are permitted. So every year, they have to submit certain paperwork. There's a fee, there's a permit, there's a system...
And an inspection.
And a series of inspections. Yeah. So there's a whole system in place there by which we know who is cooking food and selling it to the public and that we're monitoring that. Renting is a more difficult type of small business to monitor. But having a more robust type of program that's merely not just a registration, but that's actually a permitting program that may have some components to it, such as, in some communities, the property has to be posted as to, externally as to who's the manager and where the contact info is. And so, once that becomes part of the culture of a community and people understand, perhaps neighbors or other property owners in town, that this is the expectation when someone rents, it by definition stands out more as a violation and something that we can address. Does that make sense?
That's very helpful. Okay. At this time, I'll, if it's okay with you, I'll let the public ask you a few questions. I'll just ask that you pass the mic back to whoever's sitting in that seat and then you can pass it back and forth rather than having people jump up and down. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Please come forward, take a seat and identify yourself. So, yes, please, ma'am.
Okay. So I'll stand, yes. I'm Orianna Adams, Precinct 10. I really want to thank you very much for the work you've, is this on?
Yes.
Yep. Oh, yeah, we can hear you.
For the work you've been doing. We've sent a lot of business your way and we're really, very, very pleased with the responsiveness that we've had. So thank you very much. I just have a couple of specific questions. One of our concerns is the number of tenants in a house. And we know the doors get locked so that you're just counting the rooms that are open. So when it's allowed to have kind of eight unrelated tenants, there'll be eight rooms open and two doors locked or three doors locked. What can you, I mean, my first question is, what can you do with current bylaws about locked doors? And what can we do to let you in there if there's a reasonable thought that there are 10, 12, you know, any number of people in violation of the regulations? So that's one question. The second is, I've been in touch with Mr. Moore. ... online complaint tracking system. We all know that it's a lot of work for neighbors to, you know, and some neighbors don't like to call. They don't like to call the police. They don't like to bother people. So we're trying to find a way to facilitate that because we only know about nuisance houses if there are a lot of complaints. So it's kind of difficult. And we're trying to figure out ways to make it really easy and transparent. And then the third question is really interesting, even though it's, I can understand because it's summertime, there aren't a lot of student problems. Most of what you described, Mr. Thompson, are landlord-owner issues. That is, issues about not just how properties are maintained, but the kind of pressure on houses because there are too many people in there. And so I guess that speaks to what Ms. Anderson was asking about, about some kind of bylaw with real teeth for what we're now seeing is a commercial enterprise. It's not just kind of friendly folks running to somebody nice who came and needed a roof. So my three questions have to do then with locked doors, online tracking, and what might be needed to manage the commercial.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
As far as your first, sorry, my first question, if we're in a home, in a building for a routine inspection, plain view, you see open doors, we're able to gather information that way, what we do need to be cautious of is a lot... What we do need to be cautious of is a locked door. The person that is actually afforded the privacy behind that locked door needs to be there to allow us in to gather any information that we might use for any future action. So we all need to be aware of that as inspected or rather gather that information. The option is, if we suspect something that is in violation and we're going to take a more serious approach, we need to go to the court and try to obtain and we should search for it to ground that information. Would that answer your question? Second question, as far as online tracking, tracking and complaint filing, great, we're all in favor, we want to see it happen. We're moving in steps as fast as we can with the resources that we have available. And I think we're going to see the first, I guess, effort for online filing with the rental registration that we discussed on earlier. Dan, so I don't have a better way to explain that, but we're very soon going to launch our state-owned webpage, which will include the online option for filing that registration. We hope we're talking about it, you know, developing a complaint model right there within the website. I can't tell you when that's going to take place. We're still trying to figure out how we gather, get that information back to us, how we could respond to it. So right now, we're complaint-driven by Paul Colling, by whether or not that is the bribe of us, John Drakon and Wes.
It just had to do, I guess maybe it was a reiteration.
There's more of a comment. I think there's more of a comment, but John's, you know, I'm dealing with him.
I think it's a question that many people on the board have raised, which is, what kind of bylaws can we think together about crafting that would be enforceable for, on the business end? I mean, most of this is enforceable on the tenant end. And some of us have been shifting our attention from the student or tenant issue to the landlord-owner, particularly those who make big bucks out of this and run lots and lots of places. How do we concede to it that they're, the way they run those rentals are neighborhood-friendly? What kind of regulations can we do to enforce the management frame for that?
I think moving forward, we have to work with professional staff on the planning side that we lay fantastic rehab to this board. What I can, in the stocks and that, tell you that I'm actively working with senior planner and zoning board appeals. I'm trying to really narrow down those conditions that are put on those special permits so that we're working with something that, you know, I can go out there and use. So we're looking at that in depth, real conditions and responsibility that will be enforced, will be monitored, and that might be the first step or, you know, most real result that you might see soon. We're actively working on that now.
Mr. Tucker?
The answer is to simply, in whatever permitting, rental property permitting system that you create, you aim the enforcement at, you aim the registration at, and you, and the subsequent enforcement at, the property owners or the landlords or the management company, rather than arranging it in such a way that the landlord somehow has to deal with the tenants and it ends up being principally on the tenants' backs. Understanding that if you, no matter how carefully you aim it at those who are truly responsible for operating the commercial enterprise, there's going to be an impact on the tenants. If the tenants have not been given clear information and sort of proceed with the process of learning how not to live in a house, they're going to be feeling an impact anyway. I have a young friend who is a student at UMass who regularly complains bitterly to me about the unfairness of the town in trying to enforce even what we have because of the impact that it has on the ability of students to find affordable units. Julie and I were talking before the meeting and she relayed the story of a person who had to move out of town, who's a professional, had to move out of town because they couldn't find a place to rent that they could afford. Part of the issue here, I'll raise the big bugaboo, is supply. If there aren't enough places for people to live, then the demand mounts and mounts and mounts and mounts until the demand can pretty much override almost anything you try. We can put this in place and we should and we have, we are. Amherst has been profoundly derelict in addressing this question. We've been trying to address it for some years. And the first time around with the rental registration system, the landlords were very organized and they beat it back. I think this time, the momentum is on the other side. But you understand that we have a system in place that is probably, next to the academic economy, one of the largest economic activities in Amherst. And the dislocation that this will cause is going to be painful all over the place, even as it is necessary to proceed with it. So we just need to bear that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Yes, ma'am, please. Yes, please. Identify yourself.
My name is Jennifer Tell, rather than Precinct 10. A couple of questions. First, I think the house that you were talking about, is that now looking at?
Could be.
The owner living in California?
Could be.
That house is the worst-looking house I have ever seen and I have there's no evidence of anything happening.
Oh, the law's gone now. Wishes are cut.
That is.
The trash is gone.
The house is, I mean, to say that that's progress is very concerning. I mean, that's, anyway, but that's, so I am concerned that you would think that that house is not the most terrible house. I've lived in Los Angeles, New York City, and I've never seen a property in that condition. So it's not, if that's improved, then that's not acceptable. So that's a real concern for me to think of that, to put that in success column. But I also don't understand, because there's, all this discussion sounds like a city people, very long run, it's a change, is there, has it ever been discussed, just putting a moratorium on conversions in that fraternal neighborhoods around the university? And if there's a shortage of housing, that that's probably university's concern? I mean, does everybody's concerned that the branch adapting more by the university and not the residents in the adjacent neighborhood? It seems like we've discussed this for years and properties are being converted daily or weekly. So it seems like, I don't know why we can't just put a stop to it. A moratorium, you know, for, you know, some short-term amount of time and try and, you know, get the situation under control. Doesn't seem like there's a lot, we have a lot of time aside to save you.
Thank you, Ms. Tub.
I'd like to address the first part of your question, which is, and I was going to say this earlier, I decided not to, because when I do think about one tool that perhaps we'll be coming back to that we're missing is one that we'll be looking at external maintenance. Because we can certainly deal with the trash, but a lot of times when we're working on homes, what we're working on is the interior and you're not seeing it. You may be seeing the trash, that'll be maybe seeing the lawn, but you're still seeing an exterior that doesn't look so right. And so I would say.
That's a good question, neighborhood, because it's not.
And I understand that very well. And in fact, just today, I was looking at something very, very interesting that's been done in another state that has to do with external maintenance. And so I think that may be one of the things that we'll be coming back to about because I think you sort of hit it in the nail on the head. We actually know what's going on and what was going on in the interior of that property. And ironically, a huge strides have been made in terms of sanitation and minimum standards for fitness of the living. But it may not be evident.
Yeah, the house is.
If you, I'm sorry, we really have to, everyone has to use the mic and take turns talking.
Right, so I think that this is a good example of that there are other concerns in neighborhoods where the external appearance of a property does affect many people in the neighborhood. So thank you for bringing that up and, you know, we are recognizing that as an issue. Second half of what you were just bringing up, I may defer to someone else to answer.
That's more a question for town council than anything else, I think. That's, that's a really difficult question, Ms. Tub, as far as imposing a moratorium. There's nothing in the laws that I know of that allows that to happen. I think rent, you can rent, you can rent things out, that's, you know. And it's, it's a point well taken. Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back. You'll have to identify yourself further.
Forgive me if my questions are naive, because my wife and I just moved here 10 months ago. What are the tax revenues for the town of rentals versus owner occupied? Does anyone, I mean, how does that impact? It seems like all these rentals are going to bring down the property values of these properties and decrease the tax revenues, but maybe that's not the case because I.
First of all, welcome to Amherst. You've, you've put yourself right into the thick of it. Mr. Tucker?
I can't speak to the relative figures, total figures, but the impression, and you're not the first person to say this, is actually inaccurate, unfortunately. A predominance of rental properties or even a few rental properties in a residential neighborhood actually increases the tax assessment for all the rest of the properties because those rental properties can sell for and regularly do sell for more than a single-family residence being sold to another family. They are more valuable.
Since I moved here, I can't figure out why the town is squandering its birthright between these beautiful old neighborhoods and what's in front of town. And you seem to have answered my question.
There's, there is, let me make it very clear that there is no policy of any kind on the part of the town to encourage this. In fact, the town has been working for at least two years on trying to address this change because what it does is, it deteriorates the community generally. The fact of the tax revenue is neither here nor there. This is an opportunity that the market is driving. The combination of the recession, the combination of demographic changes that are occurring in the population. We have a number of boomers like myself and others who are in the process now of selling their suburban homes and moving into more urban settings where it's easier to gain access to goods and services and transportation and so forth. We have the sort of unholy alliance of changes, economic, demographic, and others, that I think are driving this process. It's not in any way a result of any policy by the town. In fact, the town has been working actively and is working, currently is working actively in the person of the planning board and others to try and turn this around.
And can we, before you, before you go on, could we hear from Mr. O'Keefe?
Thank you. Just following up on Mr. Tucker's comment about the tax revenue there, it's really important to keep in mind also that increases or decreases in property values make not the slightest bit of difference to the town's tax revenue. That does not go up or down the town's total tax revenue. We live in a state where tax, our tax levy is governed by Proposition Two and a Half. We cannot raise the levy more than two and a half percent per year, plus new growth, which means that if individual properties rise or fall, that does not change the town's levy limit that it's allowed to levy in property taxes. So what happens if my property value goes up is that I pay more in taxes and everybody else pays a little bit less. And conversely, if the property value goes down, it changes the distribution a little bit, but it does not change the town's revenue. So the town cannot get more money by having its overall property values rise. That does not bring in more or less money to the town.
Okay, that's good. The other question I have is about UMass. Are they, is there any communication between the town? And I know these are really naive questions. And is there any communication between UMass and the town?
There has been communication between UMass and the town as long as there's been UMass. The, the level of communication rises and falls with the administration. And one of the things that has happened over the years is that UMass, the parties that used to happen in the dormitories at UMass have been pushed off campus due to UMass internally enforcing its anti-drug and alcohol policies within the dorms. We recently heard from one constituency reporting on illegal for-profit bars being run by tenants. And, you know, I'm not surprised to hear that at all because.
Yeah, so illegal what?
Bars.
Being run by?
Basically selling, selling alcohol out of your basement to minors. It was in one of the, one, one of the handouts. And we've, we have actually met with the redevelopment authority, which is another commission in town, met extensively with UMass around housing issues around the so-called Gateway Project, the area between the town and campus. And the, you know, they've been more or less communicative, depending on who you talk to. However, they have not indicated any plans to sort of build more housing on campus to reduce the load on Amherst. So in some, in some respect, we're, we're having to absorb those problems and we have very little that we can push back against.
Are they liable for misbehavior of their students legally?
No, it's the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And then the last thing is, this moratorium, that's not something the town meeting can do? That's, because it's, it sounds like a first proposal won't be until spring meeting. And like, you know, I saw some presentation, we're losing a house a day, I mean, a house a month like this in neighborhood audit. So there is no mechanism to do a moratorium until a proposal can be adopted?
I'll tell you that that's the, the idea of the moratorium is just, is a new one, but for the board, I think it was just brought up. Sometime between the last meeting and this one, and I don't have an answer for you. I don't know if anybody here.
How does that, is that something that's within the province of the town meeting?
Mr. Tucker?
We, as, Mr. Weber answered this question previously to the effect that we will need to consult with town council. Moratoria are very difficult to do and they usually are legally justified only on the basis of public health and safety issues. The town did one in the late 80s because we had so many building permits in the pipeline for residential units that there was a very real possibility it would overrun our capacity to provide water and sewer to all citizens. That's the sort of level of, and type of issue upon which you can justify moratoria. However, that's a, it's a moving target and we will need to talk to town council.
Is there a stopgap measure that can take place before the spring? I mean, I just.
The ability of the public sector to prohibit private individuals from incorporating themselves as different kinds of financial entities and buying and selling property is profoundly limited.
Was the conversion in this, I'm sorry, I'll stop.
Thank you very much for your questions, very helpful. Yes, Ms. Gruber?
Just on a slightly different note, while we have representatives here from the Health Department Inspection Services, on our agenda, it talked about discussion of model lease, and you did explain that you're not there yet. But I think at the same time that we're talking about holding property owners responsible, I think we're looking as a board for some guidance on what would be in a good lease in terms of clauses where if there are things like keg violations or legal bars, whatever, that the landlord then has some ability to terminate the lease. And that's the kinds of things we've looked at. But in our review of certain permit applications, we ask to see the lease agreement, but we were a little bit in the dark about what should be in it. And similarly, management plan, I mean, we talked about parking and trash, but what would be a good management plan? So I think management plan and model lease would be really helpful for our board because that's often part of the permit decision-making process and I have that expertise.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruber. I think, you know, I'm ready to, I guess, release the three of you unless there's something from the, from members of the public that specifically directed to them. I'll take one, one more question. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Elisa Rubenstein and I live at 38 Bering. And I am very impressed with the team that we have here. They came to our neighborhood, they met with about 20 of the residents, and we had a very good conversation. One thing that I'm listening with interest to is that there seems to be a change of focus that we could get at some of these problems without zoning bylaws and maybe look at some general bylaws. And I think, I'm wondering, well, it's part of a question, that those kinds of tools might be more helpful to the three people sitting here in our town. I just want to say. I just want to say a history of living in, um, this neighborhood for thirty-two years that the bars in residence are not new, the police know about them. Um, in fact, the biggest bar in western Massachusetts was on the corner of Phillips and North Pleasant Street. And, um, that was, is now the Hillell House. It used to be a fraternity. And the neighbors wondered why there were so many drunk people walking around. And as a result of that, our neighborhood organization, which was formed in nineteen eighty-eight, did some work in trying to get the open container law on the books, um, the nuisance, the noise bylaw on the books. And this is what gave the police tools that they use all the time now. So I'm thinking that there are some tools that we could ameliorate the situation by looking now at landlords, the same kinds of tools that the police are using now. What can the inspection services use to, um, maybe not permit for every resident because Mr. Tucker alluded to the fact that this is just so time-consuming, such a big problem, will take a, a long time to do. But how about starting with the houses, the landlords that are, there are complaints on the books as recently as a year back? Why can't that be the start of having to have a permit, having to have an inspection and maybe losing the permit because you have shown that over the years you have not maintained your properties, enforced your lease, had any kind of management plan? I just want to say one more thing, and that's a couple of years ago, the town did something great as assigning police officers to neighborhoods as a liaison. And our neighborhood met with our assigned police officer, and he said, "If you clean up Phillips Street, the majority of your problems would be solved because that's where people are walking around looking for parties, that's where liquor is being sold." The letter that you got referred to these houses on Fearing, I don't think that's true. There's only four left rentals on Fearing. It's mostly coming from that one street. And those landlords have had decades of neglect. It's not just last year, it's decades. And I'd like to see the town really do something to change that, um, atmosphere, which makes it harder and harder for families to stay there. I think we've had enough. And I would really hope that sooner rather than later, some of these very practical general bylaws are tackled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubenstein. If you don't mind, could you pass the mic over? Maybe someone could just field the question of, uh, of the general bylaw and just answer that again real quick. The, the question was would a, would a general bylaw instead of a zoning bylaw be more useful as an enforcement tool? That's the best I can rephrase it.
Yeah, given where we are in the sort of stages of developing the right type of regulations and laws, you know, once we understand what we're, the approach we're trying to take, I think these are the discussions we're going to have that zoning might not be the answer to, to all these issues that we have. And we're going to have to look at other options, whether the, uh, general bylaws or policies and procedures and other things that are going to build on, um, the base, base general, uh, zoning bylaws that we have.
I think I saw Mr. Rosnoy.
Uh, yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. A question for Ms. Fetterman before they leave. Uh, I noticed that the registration form that you referred to that's currently in effect, the one that was authorized in two thousand and three, um, doesn't have an expiration time or a time period, it's just in perpetuity. A person signs up once. And also it has a, a line for a number of units, but not number of people per unit. I suppose that could change depending on whether it's a family or foreign-related people. But, um, I, I'm not familiar with the Enabling Act from town meeting in two thousand and three, but was, weren't, shouldn't this have some sort of a, um, a reauthorization, um, time period, even if it's only three years or even five years or something, or maybe upon the triggering of, uh, changing of, uh, enough tenants or perhaps if there's a violation reported or a police, a certain number of police reports, or something like that?
Well, two things there. Again, when this was originally written in two thousand and thirty, um, what we've learned since then is that there were certain aspects to it that perhaps, um, could have been done differently to make this more enforceable. This is one of the things that's been pointed out. Because we really feel like we're headed towards some type of certification, pre-rental inspection program, we haven't really thought about putting energy into changing the rental registration other than changing the form itself a little bit. You're, um, we have redesigned it just in the past week or two. But in terms of how frequently it's done, again, that'll just be wrapped into, um, whatever type of program we develop in the coming year. Because yes, it's true that having it be something that is just a one-time thing, also sort of by definition made it something that was certainly fleeting in people's minds.
Uh, it, it doesn't seem like ten bucks a year per unit is excessive and to have people do it on an annual basis. Once you get the database accumulated, I would think it wouldn't be that much more difficult to, uh, to have a person just, the computer could tell you when certain ones are up.
Yes, and again, if that's linked to an inspection and an actual comment, the whole system would be that much more robust and that much more useful. But yes, having...
So you don't see doing that now?
No. We, we have discussed that at length, and I think what we've come to is that, um, what feels a lot more effective would be to put that, that energy into creating this larger program that would include an inspection, um, because the aspects of rental registration would just be rolled into it.
I understand what you're saying. I would, I would advocate that you do some of that now.
Yeah.
That's not, I understand it's your job, but that's my good point.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosnoy. For those of you who didn't get a chance to, um, ask questions of these fine people who've come to visit us tonight, I would, you're available, um...
Twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four seven. You can be reached through the normal town channels and, um, also for anybody who hasn't got a chance to speak yet, we're going to have an additional public comment period. We're going to be dealing with zoning for the next, uh, for the remainder of the meeting. So, um, please don't hesitate to ask more questions and we hope that we haven't deterred you from maybe coming back and talking to us again sometime. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, the, um, this is an, an easy segue into the, um, zoning subcommittee report, uh, from tonight. Mr. Crowe?
So, yeah, you're right. This, this is actually directly, it relates directly to what we talked about tonight. Uh, we, we started our, a discussion of, of the proposed amendments for one and two family houses and conversions. And just barely getting into it, we realized that there's, there's a number of concerns that, that these proposed amendments might inadvertently limit what are actually desired, um, uses. And so we, we actually are, are, we wanted to, um, hear from these people tonight and get a sense of, of where the rental registration process was going because this is really going to impact how we think about zoning. It's actually more, it seems to be more important than zoning. So, um, so we are, we did not make any decisions tonight. We did not, um, say we should do this on this zoning or that. Because, you know, we're, we're not really sure what effect any of these will have, any positive effect that any, any of our proposed amendments might have. Um, and we're concerned about the possible negative effects. So, um, I, I guess we, we, we want, we want, um, either the board or the subcommittee to, to have some sort of active role in, in crafting this rental permitting or rental, um, registration process. In other words, a citizen board, a policymaking board, not, not just town staff. I, I mean, I, I gather that there has been a significant public input already, but it's, it's sort of behind the scenes. We're not, it's not really clear that the town knows what's going on as a whole. And so a, a public board is one way of, of, um, getting the town involved, getting the town to know that something is happening. I'm a little concerned, this is, um, I'm going to editorialize, this is not so much the report, that, um, that this rental permitting regime is, is, is not really going to be in place for a whole year. And, and in the meantime, we've heard from the Gateway Neighborhood, they're losing a house a month. That's, that could be twelve more houses if that's, if that's the correct number. So, I guess when we talk about zoning tonight, um, we need to be clear that, uh, what we're doing is probably not going to have an immediate impact on, on, on that neighborhood or any of the other neighborhoods, North Amherst or anything else that, that is concerned about deteriorating conditions. There's a sense that, that we want to be able to do something that will have an immediate effect and, and we're just not really sure that, that there is anything there. So, um, that's, that's a, a brief introduction. We talked about, um, single-family homes, duplexes and conversions and realize that it's pretty complex.
Anyone else from the zoning subcommittee care to weigh in? Ms. Gruber?
We didn't really get too far into this, but, um, we, near the end of our meeting, we were, were able to look at the, um, entire, uh, general residence zone because it seemed to me in most of these conversations that we've been having with people from neighborhoods, um, where changes have been discussed for the entire RG zoning district, the RG district is much broader than what seems to be the most impacted neighborhood. And I'm using neighborhood to talk about Ferring, Sunset, Lincoln, and when we make a zoning change, it, it, and that's the sort of unintended consequence, adverse impact. We may be eliminating some flexibility in, in some other RG neighborhoods. So, um, I think it's important that we realize, you know, when we're talking about the zoning changes, what's, what's involved, and I think all the, all the members have this, something they can look at and have a different scale. But it's not the moratorium idea, but it, it occurred to me that if we needed to do something kind of stopgap or, you know, kind of almost responding to a crisis mode, maybe we could split out the RG, this is, this is really off the top of my head, and have like RG one and RG two, and maybe RG, maybe the zoning district is slightly different surrounding the UMass campus for now, and we could take certain measures there without having to change the rules for the whole zoning district. So I'm just throwing that out. We didn't talk about it, but, um...
Yes, Mr. Carson?
I, I understand what you're saying, but my concern would be that then the, the, these, these efforts to investors buying houses, they would just move out to the outer neighborhoods. So I, I, I like the idea of at least exploring the idea of a moratorium. Uh, I, I know that you said that it's very difficult to achieve that, but I wonder if we could have the town council come to one of our meetings and explain what might be involved if that could be done.
Frequently we can contact, uh, town council either by, um, we can direct a letter to him as a, as a board, we can ask, uh, questions directly of, uh, Mr. Bard, um, with respect to questions about, um, what I think it might work best is if we have a particular proposal that we're thinking of saying a moratorium on X in this context or whatever, what have you. If we can come up a proposal, that would be something the town council could then evaluate and decide whether it was, um, legal.
Okay.
Rather than, I think, expl, asking him to explore what is, uh, possible. I think that would be too much scope, maybe I'm wrong, but, um, I think that if we can come up with something that, you know, possibly, the, the idea of the moratorium keeps coming up, and if it's possible for the planning board to do it, perhaps we should consider it. The, I have a question, um, which I, is the, um, let me back up a step. Traditionally, the planning board proposes zoning amendments. I can't, I can't remember us proposing something that wasn't part of the zoning bylaw. Can the planning board, um, sponsor or, um, be the, um, body that proposes a general bylaw? Mr. Tucker?
Yes, you have done so in the past. Further, the, the moratorium that was pursued in the late nineteen eighties was pursued as a zoning amendment. So presumably that would be the, the path that it would follow this time as well if that, if that was something that was feasible. Again, I, I've already expressed my, um, my doubts about that, but I'm quite willing to be wrong.
The concept of bringing a general bylaw, um, that provides for, as Ms. Fetterman's talking about certification, inspection and permitting of rental uses as a commercial enterprise, seems to be the workable solution that's been, that's been, you know, that seems most, most doable. My question is if the planning board can, A, if it's, if it's only, is this only happening with town staff right now that's working on this bylaw? Is, Mr. Turner?
The answer is yes. Uh, and, and currently town staff are also the only ones working on, uh, general bylaw amendments, uh, affecting rental residential parking to, to parallel the zoning amendment that was just passed at, uh, the annual town meeting. And similarly, a conceptual nuisance property bylaw that would address some of the maintenance, exterior maintenance issues that have been raised here as they address public health and safety questions. Again, there are, there is this wonderful and horrible tension between the rights of the individual to do things with property and the rights of the community to try and control what's happening to it. And somewhere in the middle, uh, there is a moving target about where, what you're allowed to do as a community in terms of regulation. And in each instance, uh, we would need to explore that with, with town council.
It seems to me that it would be difficult to be too ambitious in terms of what we ask town meeting for in terms of, um, resources or enforcement mechanisms, um, that those, I think, would have wide support in town meeting. Mr. Tucker, do you think that it's feasible if the planning board takes this up as working on, I'll take for example, this inspection permitting and certification of rental properties, general bylaw, that we could get it ready for fall town meeting, given where it's at right now?
I don't believe so. I think you could get it ready, you could assist with others in getting it ready for the spring, possibly.
What about the parking?
Parking, I think, is, is largely drafted. Again, once we start reviewing it, we always find things that are, uh, that need to be adjusted. Similarly, there is a draft of the, the nuisance property, uh, amendment. Same process. We, zoning subcommittee for the first time tonight started dealing with the single-family and duplex issues, spent most of their meeting talking about that and talking with citizens about that, and, and now is, uh, having serious doubts about how to proceed with, with all of that or elements of that and so forth. We don't know what will happen if we start, but if we don't start, we won't know what will happen. If that makes any sense.
I would like to ask Ms. Gruber at this point. She has prepared, um, and it was presented at her last meeting, but there's a, she prepared an outline which sort of talks about the scope of what the planning board might do in terms of addressing some of these issues. I think that's my interpretation, but perhaps you'd like to explain your concept and talk about that a little bit.
And I haven't looked at it since the last time we met, but I'm glad we're, okay. I think part of this was to try to identify who was going to be the lead for the town in the initiative around a rental certification program, which I now understand is what it is, not rental registration. And I think, uh, regardless of who's the lead, I think that the planning board should have a significant role. And I think it's beginning to evolve enough with the staff work that it's time to start having public and board involvement or, um, some of, whatever boards. Many times, the issue of... Many times, the issue of the university and its roles and responsibility around providing more housing, managing student behaviors comes up, and trying to identify how that's happening, how the town, through its various boards and committees, is talking with UMass, and there may be other boards that are in conversations, we have had some on and off. So, it's trying to kind of figure out what our role was when I drafted this, and it was really to help focus the conversation, I thought we would be able to have at our last meeting, which we weren't, and I think this, we're getting down to some of that. And then, I think the bigger, sort of, not to crack, is where does additional housing go for students, if it does happen off-campus, or which part of it might happen off-campus? I don't think that we really have figured that out as a planning-related issue. So, and that's a long-term issue, I think I talked about that. And then, more specifically, which zoning and regulatory tools do we have that we want to pursue, and we're looking at a menu of possibilities, and each one has its intricacies, as we found out tonight, as we start to get down to the details. So, I don't know if that, is that, if that's what you wanted me to summarize?
That's very helpful. I mean, I think what I'm trying to do is try to narrow the issue. I mean, what I heard you, as the zoning subcommittee say, is that you're concerned about pursuing these definitions when there's a general bylaw in the works, and that you don't want to put anything in place that's going to conflict with that. And also, what's the, you know, what effect will these have in terms of changing definitions versus, you know, what could happen with a, with a general bylaw? Is that more or less your concern? So, what I'm concerned about is spending time on the definitions when we should be looking at a larger discussion, and trying to really deal with the problem holistically, rather than through tiny pieces.
If I might, I think that does encapsulate a lot of what we talked about, and if I could just add, I'm, myself, am not inclined to go with the moratorium procedure. I would much rather focus on something that I think will carry us to where we want to go, if it has to wait until spring. And I want to, sometimes what happens when a moratorium is even talked about, mentioned, breathed about, is it can cause a bunch of action out there in the community, because people are afraid there will be a moratorium, and it's sort of a little bit like a zoning proposal, and all of a sudden, you rouse out a bunch of activity that might have just been going along at a normal pace. And if I understand, Mr. Tucker, we might have a moratorium on conversion, but I don't, you know, the idea that we would have a moratorium on buying a residence and renting it out instead of having it owner-occupied, I might be missing something, but I just think that's a path I wouldn't want to go down. So, I think we have some very limited options if we did go with the moratorium, and I would see it as last resort.
Mr. Tucker?
I would, in the last month and a half, partly because we've put our toes in this water, up to our knees now, and none of us, none of the board members anyway, have been in that water before. The board has swung back and forth between potential paths to go forward on. I would recommend that you not necessarily abandon pursuing zoning amendments. There are a number of ways in which, right now, let me just tell you about the staff methodology. When we put together a zoning amendment, we basically take all the kitchen sinks we can find, and put them in the language, and then throw it on the table and say, "Okay, what works here and what doesn't?" We'd refine it to an extent, but we, there's a lot in here, in many of these, that doesn't necessarily need to be in here. There are ways in which each one of these amendments is trying to address problems in the language now. Some of it is just cleaning it up, some of it is addressing the policy issues that are on the table here. The zoning, as has been stated, cannot address all of that. You will need general bylaws and other regulations. For instance, the rental registration system, which has been referred to a number of times here, is not a town bylaw, it's a Board of Health regulation. It was a Board of Health regulation because the Board of Health felt that having a registration of all of the rental properties would help them in dealing with public health and safety issues having to do with rental properties. They didn't have a scope substantially larger than that, the Board of Health didn't. The town did at the time, and much of the rest of that scope got peeled away. That's why it does make sense for whatever rental permitting system that gets developed to be a general bylaw. But my point is that the, one of the things that we, the staff, have learned in pursuing this for two years, is that you have to pursue all of the pieces at once. You can't just go, "Oh, here's the solution, it's a moratorium," or, "Here, let's just create a rental permitting system." You have to pursue all of it simultaneously, and that's partly why staff who have been here this evening have been describing things in a cautious and incremental way, because every time we move one of these pieces, something else shifts, and we have to figure it out and adjust to it. I think you, I would recommend and agree with the subcommittee, that I think the planning board should have a role in this process, both in terms of providing the public forum for discussion of the issues of a general bylaw, and also with assistance in developing this. I don't think it's going to go substantially faster as a consequence, because part of what's going to be possible, part of what's going to happen is, as it becomes more real, we are going to discover what kinds of resources are needed to make it, to make it real. You can create a regulation, but if you can't enforce it, and you don't have the people to do that, then it doesn't do you any good at all. In fact, it might make things worse. So, I would urge you not necessarily to abandon the zoning amendments, but to look at them in the light and the context of these other changes that need to go forward, and see which pieces make the most sense to be in the zoning, and which pieces should be addressed in other ways.
And it also might be worth our talking about some of these in more detail, and we haven't discussed the substance of any of these yet, but I do think that there's a lot more going on here than just technical changes and changes to definitions. In particular, the changes that are in the one- and two-family dwelling article, I would not at all describe as cautious and incremental. So, if implemented in the form that they're in draft form here, it would have the effect of basically taking away by right rental of a single-family house, and it would take away by right conversion of a single-family house into a duplex. Those are not cautious and incremental changes, those are major substantial changes. And I probably don't fully understand the range of issues that you're already grappling with on the subcommittee, but I do have some sense of what sorts of issues are out there. And I'm well aware that anything that is going to be based on the division between owner-occupied versus rental, obviously depends heavily on some sort of either rental registration system or rental permitting system, and we already talked about the semantic difference between those two systems. Clearly, you would have to have something like that in place, but we do have a rental registration system in place now. It sounds like we're actively taking steps to put more teeth into it, while at the same time actively taking steps to replace it with a more robust rental permitting system. And so, I think that the language that's proposed, certainly in the one- and two-family dwelling article, would work within the current system, and also, like anything in our zoning bylaw, could be revisited and refined, once we take the next steps toward building a more robust rental permitting system. If we needed to change the language to fit in better with that system, we could do that at that point. But I definitely don't think that we should be looking to not make any substantial changes until that permitting system is in place. I think that they can, can and should proceed in parallel, and we can do, take multiple approaches.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. We will have a public comment period in a few minutes, so if you, if we haven't heard from you yet, please just be patient. The, let's, I think, let's move into a little more detail, and if that's okay with everyone, we'll try and talk about this particular amendment that Mr. O'Keefe has mentioned. Just for the reference, the proposed amendments that the zoning subcommittee has been looking at involve changes to single-family and duplexes, that's the one that was just brought up by Mr. O'Keefe, converted dwellings, lodging and boarding houses, a mixed use and live-work use, the rental registration requirement, and the functional family definition. So, that's six separate zoning articles that could potentially be brought to town meeting. And the, is someone from the zoning subcommittee or staff able to give a summary description of Article Blank 1 and 2 family dwellings that would be comprehensible to the rest of us?
Go ahead.
So, it's, one and two family dwellings is proposing, or it is in draft form, that we might make two classes in each, one class that is owner-occupied and one class that is not owner-occupied, and then to regulate them differently, to allow, to allow owner-occupied uses by right, either by, as a yes or as a site plan review, and non-owner-occupied to require a special permit. That's the summary, that's what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder, that simplifies it considerably. Were there comments from anyone else on the zoning subcommittee, or the rest of the board, on this article, technical changes, anything like that? We're talking about this for the first time, in terms of any kind of details. Ms. Krueger?
If I could add, one thing we talked about, kind of, I think was triggered by one of the correspondences we received from a resident, concern about by right conversion versus special permit by the ZBA conversion, and we discussed special permit by the planning board for conversion as a way to have it not be by right, but a discretionary use, where the applicant would need to establish the desirability, or the mitigation of any negative impacts before the planning board would approve the conversion, since the by right factor seemed to be part of the crux of the issue. So, we talked about special permit planning board, which we have the authority to do, but right now, there aren't any uses in the use chart that have that.
Mr. Tucker?
And added detail, at least in the current drafts, that was discussed back and forth for Class 1, single-family detached dwelling, the staff made an attempt in the language to be as inclusive as possible under that, and included the possibility of rentals for households that consisted of an individual, a group of two or more persons who are related in the traditional sense of a family, or not more than two unrelated persons, and for functional families, which is yet a separate amendment that we presume would be, that this language presumes would be passed. The subcommittee correctly, as the staff had before drafting this, said, "Well, yeah, but are you covering all of the potential circumstances in which you might have rental situations that, where the households would not by their nature cause problems?" The Class 2, single-family rental, which is a residential use being essentially operated as a commercial enterprise for three to four people, that being the definition of not more than three unrelated persons, is presumed to have the possibility of having more negative impacts, as has been described at length and repeatedly. So, we're trying to include in, under the Class 1 category, as many as possible, but the language which attempts to be detailed may not capture all of it. And so, we, one of the things we might want to look at is the possibility, if we want to keep that kind of provision, is the possibility of creating broader language that is more inclusive under the Class 1 category.
So, what you're saying is that these amendments are really designed to work together?
Yes.
Right? These are a package of amendments. The, except for possibly live-work use, the functional family definition would modify our current zoning bylaw that's known as the four unrelated persons bylaw, to include, well, to make unrelated individuals that share certain characteristics and live as a household to qualify as a functional family. And I assume that what that would mean is that you would have a Class 1, rather than a Class 2 dwelling, where such a functional family dwelled?
Yes.
The rental registration requirement is self-explanatory. Can you explain the converted dwelling article in the context of what we've been talking about?
Yes, the converted, well, I'll explain it, and then we'll see how the context works. The converted dwelling amendment tries to do several things. As usual, it tries to just improve language wherever we can find problems with the language. It tries to principally define the difference between a converted dwelling, where you are converting unoccupied portions of a residential structure that's attached, or a detached structure, into new residential units, and distinguish that from the other categories of residential uses. Distinguish it from duplexes, where the presumption is that you are either creating, building a two-family structure, new, or adding on a new unit onto an existing single-family residence, or you are, as distinguished from, taking a large single-family residence, dividing it internally into, and making some exterior changes to allow for separate entrances, and converting that to a two-family use, which would then not be considered a duplex. Part of the intent here is we have, we have sort of slop overlap in our definitions of residential uses, and we're trying to make that, well, you can entirely do away with that barrier of fog, trying to make it as thin as possible, so that it's clearer which categories, different residential uses go into, and are, and under which regulations they apply. We're also adding, changing the definition, and again, trying to address the question of what is a conversion, and what other purposes should be addressed when a structure is being converted. There's a presumption in the existing language, for instance, that conversions should not be, should not involve whole-scale demolition of anything. So, what we tried to do is establish, in a preliminary fashion, percentages of a converted dwelling at the end of its process of being converted. No more than a certain percentage of those units can be brand-new structure, constituting a brand-new footprint. Predominantly, this is, this is intended to be the conversion of existing structures into new residential units, or new additional units. We had, an issue arose that the subcommittee saw, an amendment that you don't have this evening. We had a recent special permit decision where an individual had applied for the conversion of a detached structure to a dwelling unit. It was a two-family structure, or two, or, excuse me, a two-story structure, but it was less than the required 500 square feet. It should be, the language as created back in the late 1980s required that in order to convert a detached dwelling, it had to be in existence prior to 1964, and it could, it had to be at least 500 square feet in area. One of the things that has happened in the last 10 years is an increasing movement to try and encourage the creation of small dwelling units, both for sustainable reasons, and to eat up less land in the process. And small dwelling units of a variety of kinds usually have 500 square feet as their maximum area, rather than the minimum at which you start. So, part of the question is, how, does 500 square feet make any sense anymore? We need to look at that. And what is the linkage, if any, between the size and the age of the structure? Does a structure have to have been that size ever since, you know, since, or prior to 1964, in order to be eligible to be converted to a new dwelling? And the consensus, I believe, of the subcommittee was that it should not, and we, what we're trying to do is figure out how to do that. So, there are... So there are a number of things in here, but I'll stop there to...
So say that I live in a house that was built before 1964, and I want to convert the space over my garage into a in-law apartment, and the square footage of that is 450 square feet.
The square footage, if I may, applies only to detached structures, outbuildings, not, not to-
I see.
-an attached garage space.
All right. So if I want to, that space has never been habitable space before, I want to cheat rocket and, and let my mother-in-law live there. It's, this is an example. You've seen it before. That would be considered a converted space?
You could, you could apply for that as a converted dwelling. You could also apply for that as a supplemental apartment. That is to say, as an accessory use to your existing principal, single-family use of that structure. So you would have two paths there. Under the second path of the supplemental apartment, you would not need to have the additional square footage per unit that would be required in the zoning district, whereas if you went with a converted dwelling, you would have to have that additional square That's, one of the things that was passed out at the zoning subcommittee meeting, and I will make sure that you all get, get a copy, and I think you got it earlier, but there's a summary of all of the use, residential use categories. And while it doesn't describe every single detail of them, it, it basically gives you a sense of where they, what they are and how they might overlap.
Ms. Brestrop, did you have something?
Oh, I just wanted to point out that even the converted dwelling allows you to have a modification of the lot area requirement, is one of the conditions for one unit, if you're adding one unit.
So there aren't any changes to the use chart in terms of converted dwelling?
No. There are no changes in permit requirement. This is all about defining that category.
So let's go ahead and touch on a couple of the other categories, since we're trying to introduce ourselves to all these. Lodging or boarding house, this does have a change to the use chart. Mr. Tucker?
This, this would do two things. First, and probably least importantly, but important in terms of enforcement, it would create a definition of this use. There's no definition in the zoning bylaw now. There was some discussion at a previous zoning subcommittee meeting about, and at the planning board meeting, I believe, about whether or not the definition was, had achieved the perfection it ought, but the intent is to try and more clearly define what this use is as, again, as opposed to other kinds of residential uses. The bulk of the policy changes in this are, a lot of the discussion, let me back up a step, a lot of the discussion around the conversion, the historical conversion, since the 1850s or 60s, or whenever the mass Aggie was first created, and the neighborhoods around it began to serve even more as potential lodging for students and professors and so forth. Essentially, many of those uses became lodging or boarding houses, defined as a building in which someone lives, a building someone owns and lives in, or a portion of that building, where a single kitchen exists. They may or may not provide meals to the lodger, to the lodgers therein, and people are allowed for extended periods of time to let rooms, or suites, or whatever, but not kitchens within that building. So it, it is not the same as an apartment. It is, there are rooms or, or suites being rented to people, not, it's not the same as a, 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 a single-family house that's being rented by a group. It's being owned and operated as a commercial enterprise by someone who is letting rooms out. This is as a principal use, and it's distinguished from the accessory uses of lodging and boarding, which are limited in number. You can't have, you can have up to three people by right in your house anywhere in Amherst, as long as you follow basic rules. You can have four to six by special permit as an accessory use in your home. This is a principal use. This is identifying this as the main use of the property. What this, what the language that's added here would do is say that in the RG and RVC districts, where you have a non-conforming use, that is essentially a lodging or boarding house use, those folks could be required to apply for and obtain a special permit in order to operate that use and recognize that use as a lodging or boarding house, and regulate it under this, this category. There are also any number of, and again, a copy of this was recently provided to the zoning subcommittee and not provided to the planning board, any number of state regulations which bore, bear on lodging, boarding, or rooming houses that bear on all of these as principal uses and would be involved.
Ms. Kruger.
Well, we didn't really, we didn't get to talk about this in the zoning subcommittee meeting, but Mike, what I would have asked if we'd gotten to it is, do we have any handle on how many boarding or lodging houses we currently do have? And my, my concern is that I don't know that there's any issue right now about boarding houses, and so if, if, this is going to take a lot of time or energy from the board and there's no outstanding issue, it may be something we let filter down for another time unless the building inspector or planning staff has some information about why we're taking this up. I've heard members of the public talk about a sort of, a conversion from 1 to 2 being four unrelated to eight unrelated and calling it a boarding house, but my understanding is that's not a boarding house.
That's correct.
Technically very different, and we have to be real-
That's correct.
Words do matter here. So that's not the situation that this is getting at at all, and I, I just don't know what the problem is with boarding houses.
There isn't a problem. The question is, we have non-conforming uses, and we know of some of them, but do we know where they all are, know, know better than we know where all the rental uses are in Amherst? In, in the, in the districts where these non-conforming uses are a, a part of, we can't tell you how much of, the problem, and are not being regulated, what this would allow, it doesn't solve something. What it does is allow those uses to be recognized, to no longer operate as underground illegal activities, but to be identified as such, and operated as such as we discover them. Is this as critical as some of the others? No, it's not.
Thank you.
Definition, by the way, however, I would say, is more important to have. We don't have one now.
Ms., yes, Mr. Rosner?
I'm curious, is the purpose of this to prevent other buildings from becoming boarding houses? For example, the Silverscape building can't now get a permit to become a boarding house.
I'm sorry, the what building?
It's in the limited business, it's in the limited business district. I actually don't know whether it could or could not.
Well, that's not RVC?
No.
BL? Special permit?
Special permit?
Special permit?
Mm-hmm.
It's right on. It's in the, it's in the draft.
Yep. It's already regulated. Again, the, the portion of this that addresses what are, in truth, lodging or boarding houses but are not recognized in law, in, in these two districts, these two zoning districts, all this does is allow them to be recognized and regulated in that way. And in fact, the language says, "Special permit granting authority may only grant a special permit for a lodging or boarding house in those districts, under Article 9 of this bylaw, which has to do with non-conforming uses, for the purpose of bringing an existing non-conforming multi-occupant residential use occurring in a single-family detached dwelling into compliance as a lodging or boarding house." It's not addressing, it's not changing the rules about whether or not the use is allowed otherwise, other, the new ones would not be allowed to be established under this. Only uses that were already operating as, as these, but were not recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. One last amendment that I want to touch on, and then we'll take some public comment, is the live-work use. We have an article proposing to amend the use chart, add a new category called live-work use. This was a piece of the Form-Based Code that we talked about before, and this is the, one of these, that doesn't really relate to rental requirements, rather it adds an, sort of attempts to define something that's happening already and to set rules around it. Is that correct?
It is an attempt to add to an existing category for mixed-use buildings, the possibility that you have a much smaller scale of that. We have had a number of instances where people have requested this, and we had no place to put it under the bylaw. We had to apply, as, as Rob has, has learned, we keep a crowbar leaning in the corner of our, our offices to, to try and interpret the bylaw in such a way that people can do a reasonable thing, that the bylaw appears to allow, but doesn't say so. This would clarify that. This would say that, for instance, in the new Village Center Business District around the Amherst Depot, some of the older formerly residential or nonprofit use buildings, but that were originally single-family residences, could be occupied by a single residential owner of the property, or tenant of the property, who also operated their business on another floor in the same building. There's nothing in the bylaw that currently permits that. So there is, under live-work use, there is a tangential opportunity for some rental, for the possibility of employees. Otherwise, that does not fall into the rest of the category that the rest of this does, except that it is residential in nature. It's under the residential section of the use chart.
Ms. Brestrop.
I just wanted to add to that by saying that in the mixed-use category, you are required to have at least two dwelling units along with some other use on the ground floor. And that's the, that is the catch for some of these older buildings that are not large enough to have multiple dwelling units on the second floor, and so it makes the buildings essentially unusable. They can't really use the entire building for a business because they run into issues of handicapped accessibility, and egress, and all kinds of things that you would have, you know, on the second floor of a wooden house. You know, you don't want to invite the public up there because they can't get out fast enough, or they can't even get there if they're handicapped, so the second floor, you know, lends itself to being used as residence, but then you have to have two of them, and then, and that precludes use of some of these older homes.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. And this, this would be allowed in the RVC, RG, BG, BL, BBC, and BN districts by special permit only. It doesn't allow any by right. You'd still have to go before the ZBA to get that permit, right?
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's right. No.
All right. Thanks to the members of public who've been so patient. Please raise your hand, come on up, identify yourself. Please, yes. You can possibly put that microphone back in the stand. Thank you.
My name is Gretchen Fox, I live in Miami, Paris. I have a statement prepared about permitting, about rental permits, that I'd like to read now, but it's going to submit it, but I think it's worth reading because there's been so much discussion about it this evening. But before I do, a couple of things. One is that the, in listening to this discussion about rooming houses and boarding houses or whatever, this seems to me that it would just, that that in effect would make legal what is now illegal, rather than attacking the problem of correcting what is there and should be changed back to what it's supposed to be. We certainly don't want to legalize boarding houses and rooming houses. In RG, we already have too many de facto.
They, they are required to be owner occupied, just, I'll put that out there. The owner has to live on the premises.
Meaning the rooming house or boarding house?
Owner, yes. It's in the definition, it's right there.
I would hope that that's not the case, that it's not too many legal, that which is now illegal. And having the permit system as an approach that might correct some of the issues that are, that are in law with that, with, with kind of rentals that are happening now. But in any case, the other comment I want to make is how much we appreciate the health department and the efforts that they have put into this, because they've been self-funded with us, and, and in effect, we have been with them too, because we try to mutually agree upon what might happen. My hope is that this permitting system might actually come before town meeting in the fall, rather than having to wait for the spring, because I think it really is a urgent issue. I think that's been demonstrated by the amount of attention that's gotten here tonight. Anyway, I'll read this, the statement that I made, because now I've done a lot of research on this issue, and I don't want to go to white steps here, my joint in. In a written statement I submitted the last meeting, as you know, I stated that I believe there is a need for a rental permit system that goes beyond the rental registration system required, and it's outlined in the proposed bylaw amendment which you're currently discussing. Rental permitting systems of various types are used in many other towns, but in college and university towns, as Ms. Vetterman's office has found, they are particularly important and are so common as to be the norm. For the demand for student housing is high, as in Amherst, it is far too easy for student rentals to become substandard housing. Clearly, we have seen that happen in a number of non-owner occupied houses in our own neighborhood, and a rental registration requirement alone would hardly conclude that happening in more cases, although as outlined in the draft prepared, it is a necessary first step. A rental permit system like those in use in towns across the Commonwealth and country offers visual proof that the dwelling in question has been properly inspected, specifies the number of tenants that may occupy this property, and could specify as well the number of cars that can be parked there. Permits commonly are posted or easily available on the premises with the numbers of tenants allowed clearly marked, and give the owners and manager's names and contact information to facilitate communication with both tenants and neighbors. Rental permits promote, promote safe rental housing, allow towns to have a current record of its rental housing stock, and make it easier to control nuisance houses through the landlord's own intervention, or fines, or revocation of the permit. I'm not suggesting we put into place the stringent measures the city of Berkeley, California requires of landlords. That is, rent control firmly in place, a business license required for landlords who own three or more units, an actual business license, even if one is owner occupied, and sign-offs from seven different city departments needed for each rental unit. And I will show you what happens in Berkeley. Each of these lines represents the department in the city of Berkeley from which you have to have a paid permit in order to have a rental unit. Each line, seven different departments. And that has happened because the rental situation in Berkeley has gotten completely out of hand, and these are the ways the city has had to deal with it. Nor should the 12-page application, which I think you all have, from State College, Pennsylvania, be instituted here. But that application form does have the great advantage of clearly informing both landlord and tenant about town regulations covering such issues as fire palpations, trash, illegal alcohol consumption, and public disturbances. To set up a system that tracks all rental properties in a town where a large percentage of properties are rental units, I clerked that as much as 40% of rental, of willing tenants in Amherst are rentals, would obviously be too unwieldy to institute all at once. But in addition to the rental registration requirement that is proposed, a real permitting system could be phased in over three years or so, omitting owner occupied units and those inspected under Section 8 or similar regulations. The first inspections could be for all new rentals, and for those rentals that have accounted violation of town laws over the past year. Those properties that have already cost the town in terms of public safety and cost the neighbors in terms of quality of life. In closing, let me read to you from the town of East of Massachusetts, the permit description just as an example of what other Massachusetts towns do. Home rental permits are required by any person leasing or renting any building or any portion of a building for human habitation. The fee is $50 per unit. An up-to-date water test must be included each application or annual renewal. The structure rented must also have smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, and the number of bedrooms listed on the application must agree with assessing records. of bedrooms listed on the application must agree with assessing records. In addition, rental units are subject to inspection by the Town of East of Health Department. Applications can be obtained from the town clerk, obtained from the town clerk's office. Failure to obtain a rental permit can result in fines up to $300 a day. The town permit system is quite similar, and so are every other, several other Massachusetts towns' systems. There's just a lot of duplication in this that could easily be used here. I don't think Amherst is so unique that it couldn't use some of these regulations that other towns have. Amherst does not need to be reluctant to join other towns in instituting a sensible, fair housing proposal. This is something I believe town meeting members could get behind as representatives of our neighbors, our neighborhoods, and I believe it could come to fall town meeting. I believe it would not be hard to institute such a permit program as quickly as that. I think the Health Inspector's Department could work along with citizens, could work along with you. I'm not sure which department it comes under, but it does seem to me to be a Town of Amherst imperative.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fox. That's very helpful. And if you could be so kind as to provide copies of those sample regulations, or we'd be most grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Adams, I'm precinct ten, and you have my long statement I will not read to you because I am back in touch with you comments that you have delivered, and I really appreciate the separation. I have just three brief comments. The first is, I at least had the stunning insight that there's a distinction between residential and commercial activity, that we really don't need Class 1, Class 2, all the way down the line. That if somebody is living in the house and renting out rooms, that's a residential activity and it can be registered. But if someone is not living in the house and is renting out empty rooms, then it's clearly a commercial activity, and it could be regulated as such. Amherst has very strict and well-thought-out commercial regulations for restaurants, movie theaters, et cetera, et cetera. I feel that at least I've been so in the fog of trying to figure it out as a zoning issue that I just finally figured out today with the help of Mr. Weber because he put it so clearly when he said, asked the question of how it can be regulated. You called it a commercial activity, and I think it's the commercial activity with a non-owner resident that we're really talking about. So I found that classes one and two very confusing, but at least for me, this insight illuminated a real distinction that could add to rep, could really inform a fairly straightforward Town of Amherst bylaw regulating the commercial activity of rentals. So that's kind of, that's your forethought, I'd say.
It wasn't just me.
Well, thank you. You know how these, as educators, we know how these things happen incrementally, and that was the singer for me. The second is, I was, I want to register my disappointment, and maybe folks haven't gotten together on this. Nathaniel Mallory, sorry, the letter about the housing, the working, sorry, the memo that you had here about the Housing Shelter Committee and his talking about the plans that they're making to work with a consultant on the housing and marketing project. I felt that we had left the last meeting with a rather interesting possibility of opening up some of those meetings, or at least one of those meetings, if not more, for public comment. I note in this memo to you that their, the fair meeting seemed pretty full up, and maybe it just happened, had a communication, but I hate to lose that opportunity.
Could I, could I respond really quickly? I had a meeting on a different topic with Mr. Malloy today. I've been away, out of town for the last eight, nine days, and communicated that the planning board asked if the Housing and Shelter Committee would consider a joint meeting with the consultants once they get a schedule worked out, and he said he was going to email it to the members within the next couple of days. So it was just, we hadn't spoken when that came out.
So it shifts in the drawing, yes. Thank you so much, okay. And the final thing is that I do want to reiterate the argument that we should not be having even owner-occupied boarding and lodging houses in RG. I mean, the view is, I looked again at the number of allowable residents, it's really too much for the houses in which we currently have what we're calling de facto rooming houses, and to legalize them or to grantparent them in, I think is really not appropriate. It involves too many, six to 10 is too many residents, and so again, I urge that the allowing of boarding and lodging houses by the provisions for the RG be rescinded. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. And Ms. Adams did provide us with a detailed letter as well, and I'll just mention that we received a number of submissions from the public, not all of which we have time to go through tonight, but we do thank you and we've all received them in our packet. Mr. Fox.
Yes, John Fox at Ninety Faring Street. I was quite impressed with Mrs. Fox's testimony.
You have to say that.
This actually isn't coordinated, but everybody is prompted by lots of what you've talked about. I'm thinking about the urgency of getting the permitting, registration permitting system going, and I'm thinking about the difficulty if you're sort of moving your vast agendas all sort of forward, and it makes it very difficult then to come up with a draft registration permitting proposal if everything else has to sort of go along too. So I'm thinking about something that Mr. Weber is familiar with, I'm from a law practice, somebody comes in and says, you know, "We need you to draft something, can you have it next Monday?" You know, in a law practice, you figure out, you assign somebody to do it, or teams of people to do it. So I'm thinking about, how am I, by the end of August, if they really have a definite date for getting some draft permitting, registration permitting system? I know that Ms. Federman, I've actually worked with her some on this, has lost some material, and it can be coordinated and drafted. Mr. Tucker's office is very skilled at drafting all sorts of things. So I'm wondering if the interest in having some moratorium is actually translated, because of the difficulty of moratorium, into an urgency to get this done, so that maybe you would consider having a subcommittee working with the office coordinating and saying, "We need to have something, let's put together what we've learned from other places, it won't be perfect, but let's begin with something and let's have it by a given date rather than, let's try to work on this." So I'm asking you to consider that, maybe working with town council, getting town council involved, but giving it the kind of priority that, because it's one of the things that you can do if you get it in place soon, that will help begin to address the various issues that we've had. So you figure it out, you'll, you'll, but if you give it the kind of priority that I think it deserves, you can figure out how to get a date certain for draft and proceed in that way. I hope you will consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Ms. Keller.
I too would like to speak to the urgency of moving forward on permitting. Seen and heard the kind of habit that's rooted, not just in the Tampa neighborhood, but in our neighborhoods as well, and if that could possibly be done, we would very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Keller. All right. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Nathaniel Barker, 43 Sunset. I'm just reading this quickly and you can correct me on this, but it appears that you're looking to set up two classes of duplexes. And we kind of talked about a moratorium. And I guess I just wonder if we're looking about a moratorium and what it raises, whether or not we have just a moratorium on Class 2, and just for a brief period of time. It's different if the issue is that you have an owner occupied, then that's not such a big deal. But 2, I think, is the issue. And it would be much more incremental, as I said, and maybe not as inflammatory as just doing a moratorium on any purchases on any authority.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. I think I'm sensing a question for Mr. Bard, which would be along the lines of, can the town impose a moratorium on conversions of existing dwellings to rental use, to non-owner occupied rental use? Is that pretty close to what we're getting at with the moratorium, Mr. Schreiber?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Ms. Brestrop.
I'm trying to figure out if you're talking about the single-family rental, in other words, the rental, a single-family home is bought and then converted into a rental, or whether you're talking about the conversion of a single-family home to a duplex that is then rented, or are you talking about all of these things?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, too.
So I guess the, one of the positive aspects of dividing both single-family houses and duplexes into Class 1 and Class 2 is it allows basically tinkering. So in other words, as I think Mr. Tucker said at our last meeting, one way of causing a moratorium is to change the use chart, so basically have a zoning amendment that says no, you know, across the board. But we don't have a fine enough grain right now for duplexes to do that just for one group of duplexes, but by dividing it into Class 1 and Class 2, that would actually give the, you know, basically, town meeting a, you know, a tool where they can, you know, sort of turn the faucet for Class 2 and turn the faucet for Class 1. So that's, I guess I finally have in this light bulb go off myself, that the Class 1 and Class 2, although the names might not be perfect, residential, commercial, whatever, but that's, gives a kind of a finer instrument to, you know, achieve these kinds of things that were, so basically gives us four different kinds of, of single-family and duplexes.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Yes, Mr. Tug.
Actually, Mr. Bloom.
Bloom, sorry. I apologize.
Quick question to follow up John's. Is there anything that we can do in terms of drafting language for a permit to expedite this process, or is something that the town has to come up with in the language?
I, my understanding is that this is going to need to originate within the people who've already been working on it to, in other words, they, they're the only ones that can know what's going to work within their systems, but I think it's, we don't know, I mean, this is the first time we've discussed it, so it's entirely possible that citizen input into the language. I mean, I don't think any bylaws of any kind have ever come through this board without having citizen input into the exact language and suggestions.
Something is drafted up by the citizens and we could submit it to the town.
Any citizen can draft anything and, and propose it, subject to, you know, there's a number of requirements to go by, but you can submit proposed amendments of bylaws, general bylaws, to town meeting as citizens, yes. Mr. Tucker?
I would recommend that citizens wishing to assist with the drafting of language or so forth, submit that instead to staff and boards for review, because as Mr. Weber says, those who are going to have to use this and make it work in Amherst would have to look at it and see if it worked in that way, if it met the provisions of state law and so forth. I want to go back over the, part of the reason why spring is probably the earliest that we could do this in an effective way, even presuming that we could somehow put together the perfect language that met all of the needs of all of the constituents of Amherst who would be affected by this, all of the constituents. In order to use it, you would need to have the right amount of resources in terms of personnel and so forth. Let's presume that, you have to remember that the town's budget process starts in the fall and aims for the annual town meeting. That's when the budget for the next fiscal year, which begins next July 1st, begins. That's when money would become available, assuming we could get it all lined up and have it make sense, to acquire new people if we needed them, to acquire new sources of whatever sort would be needed to make this kind of a system work. In order to know what those resources are, we would need to be working on the system. We would have to have some sense of both what the town has, which is why we've been working on trying to pull in the data on how many rentals there are in Amherst of what different kinds. And then, once you know what kind of system you're setting up, that itself affects the number of people who would need to administer, to administer and enforce it, and the resources they would need to do that. Let's assume all of that worked perfectly and next spring, we, town meeting passes a general bylaw that does all the things that we want and gives us all the money we need. Money will start to be available on July 1st. You then have to go through a responsible process of finding the people to do that work, obtaining through the state procurement laws all of the materials and resources and so forth you would need to do that. You're talking about months and months before the process would even begin. And in the meantime, you have to alert the community as to what it is that's coming at them. And that's why, that's why I'm saying spring at the earliest. The town itself, all of those involved, not just those impacted negatively, some of those impacted positively, some of those who are somewhere in the middle, need, but who, for instance, when we were discussing in the zoning subcommittee meeting, some of the potential impacts of the single-family or the duplex changes, which would be similar to having, to the impacts of a rental registration system. What if somebody owns their property and they're just going to go on sabbatical? What if somebody's family member in another state gets sick and they have to go away for a year and have to take care of them, but their, their home in Amherst is still here and they need to rent it out? I'm not proposing the discussion about those issues. What I'm saying is there are going to be things like that that arise all the way through this process that modify what it is we end up with as a process. So that's why the gears of, what is it, the mills of God grind slow. That's why the public process takes a while on this. It's not that we don't, we would be just as happy, the staff who have to work with this, would be delighted if we had all of this done right now and all the resources we needed and the community's consensus on what should happen and what it included and how to go about it. But it's going to take at least that long to get it in place in a way that would work. That's, that's my professional opinion.
Excuse me, if you're going to speak, you got to raise your hand and come up to the microphone, please.
Steve Bloom, again. Comment me if I dare, but I would suggest you read the new Robert Carroll book on Lyndon Johnson and all the legislation he passed in 90 days after John Kennedy's assassination as inspiration for maybe examine your own efforts. And secondly, I just hear objections to Mr. Tucker about how hard it would be. Is there any way to circumvent him to introduce our own reg, for permitting? I mean, I just hear, I think it's going to take time. I don't get any sense of urgency here.
Well, first of all, I assure you that this is our top priority right now. I mean, we've dropped everything else to work on this particular issue, so there is very much a sense of urgency. And I'm going to ask Ms. Krueger to weigh in.
Well, I, I really reluctantly agree that spring would actually be a fast track, and I don't think it's drafting language that per se is the obstacle, so you could submit a draft, we could find an example, tinker with it. I think it's about public process, and there's people here who have spoken to us about the need for extensive public process around the housing market study and other things. I remember many years ago when this, a full-blown general bylaw proposal for a rental certificate... for a rental certification program came forward, the landlord community, which is educated and organized, as they should be, had some strong objections. They're going to want input. We're practically having a lovin' here now agreeing about the need for rental registration. There are other legitimate interests in communities out there. And to me, fall town meeting is like now, because we would need to have a proposal close to ready to go for public comment adjustments by the board. And, and, and we're, we're not there. So it's not just language, it's process. We have a renter community that may or may not take an interest in this and, and many other sectors of our community. And to even try to whip through that in August is impossible. So I, I, you know, can joke about having to agree with Mr. Tucker, but I think he's not being obstructionist. I think this really takes time. And to go before town meeting and suffer defeat is not a good thing. And I, one of the real values, I think, with having you folks as a constituent for this is I'm, I'm guessing that when it's time to educate the community, you're gonna be able to communicate all the concerns you've expressed to us. Why do we need this? Why are these elements in there? And to help carry the day when this has to get passed politically, because it's not necessarily a shoe-in.
I, I just want to ask, I just listened here for the first time. I've heard people say that this has been going on for years and years and years. So it's hard for me to, to listen to this and sense any kind of urgency to it. So that, as an outsider, that's just my, my observation.
Thank you, Mr. Blum. Mr. O'Keefe?
Thank you. I just wanna echo everything that Connie just said. She said it a lot more eloquently than I could have. But I, I've been working on zoning issues for more than five years now. And so I have a pretty good understanding of the degree of complexity that goes into developing something that will be as complex as this permitting system will be. And I've also stood in front of town meeting enough times and had slings and arrows slung at me for bringing articles that were perceived as not sufficiently aired in the community. That's a very negative perception that, that comes out of something that's viewed as too hastily developed. And so what we're talking about here is a system that will affect, directly affect, a very substantial portion of the housing market in our entire town for the foreseeable future. It's a system that will have its fingers in many different areas of town government, operationally, every day, the people that are making decisions about issuing permits and inspections and health and safety and public safety, things like that. It's a, it's gonna be a big complicated system. And we want to make sure that, it's, it can't be perfect. Nothing we do is ever perfect. But we want to make sure that it's at least good and that it, it has significant input from all aspects of the community and not just the segment that has been at the meetings where we've talked about it, you know, once or twice so far this summer. It definitely needs to be talked about in great detail before we try to roll out a system like that. And as a cautionary tale, I would simply point to our existing rental registration system, which we passed back in 2003 and has been sitting on the books largely unused for nine years now. That's a system that clearly wasn't well thought out enough, didn't mesh in with the mechanisms of how our day-to-day operations work in town hall. And so now, nine years later, we have the system that hasn't really done any effective good. I would hate to rush something into effect at this point and have it serve in the same capacity as that system from nine years ago. So I do think that it's, it's worth a lot of careful attention and we need to get full input from the community before we move ahead with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Uh, yes, Emily. We're back. We've got about 20 minutes left in our meeting tonight.
Valerie Hensel, 16th Avenue Street. I have been renting rooms, starting out with just one room because I'm just a low-income woman. And it wasn't until I registered with the MS Housing that I got an email from them expressing that I needed to register. When I did go to register, nobody gave me a form. So I just wanted to say that I also haven't, I don't think in the last seven years that I've been renting, anybody has complained about me renting. So I would suggest that the one versus two rental, owner occupied, non-occupied be considered. And I think also until there's an issue with the landlord, I would say that the registration part isn't as valuable. It's just simply sending out a letter and just saying we're renting. And by the way, if you're not a renter and you're a resident and you're seeing issues, contact us. So at least you can deal with the problem properties while you're waiting for this spring meeting.
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
My name is Charles Sanford, who was something you said. And you just wanted to gather some of your thoughts on, on the special permits for the classic category duplexes and what the kinds of conditions you've put on them. And this is just trying to get your thoughts on this. And is the intent really to try and limit the number of them? Or is it more regulated behavior of those properties? Or maybe you have some guidance?
Can we use the phone or friend?
I'll take the 50/50. Mr. Tucker?
But I can't speak to the board's intent. And I'm not sure they know what it, what the specifics of that would be yet. But under a planning board, either under a planning board site plan review approval or under a planning board special permit or under a zoning board of appeals permit, there are specific findings and criteria in the bylaw itself that have to be made in order to grant the permit. That's the foundation. And the, the bylaw is available online through the town website. And you can, you can check out those, those permit criteria under site plan review or those permit findings under a special permit to get a sense of where it starts. And then, part of the intent of those, those kinds of criteria and findings are to allow the board, the permitting boards, to assess the distinctions and the differences and the unique circumstances of, because no one app, application is the same as any other. And it is intended deliberately to allow for that, the application of discretion and judgment and the ability to respond to what is unique about each application. But that's the place to start.
If you're feeling really ambitious, you can look into Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 7, and see if you can understand it. There'll be a quiz next time.
But leave a message for people to come in after you if you don't come out after a while.
That's the section that deals with special permits. It's pretty detailed. Okay, were there any other comments from the public? Anybody we haven't heard from yet that wanted to speak tonight? All right. I'm gonna circle around and just try and come up with a couple of specifics that have emerged from this tonight. The first one being to propose a question to town council with respect to possible moratoriums, as to whether we can do that for non, new, non-owner occupied rental uses. The second being that we would like to look into the real possibility of bringing some type of more robust rental registration requirements to fall town meeting. We've heard that over and over. And I have heard from staff and from Mr. O'Keefe that that as a full-blown project is not possible. I would like to see if there is some way that we can do something along those lines. If that means that these zoning amendments with respect to one and two-family dwellings, class one, class two, is what we can do, then let's do that. I, I think there's not consensus on bringing the, bringing a, a full-blown bylaw, by the way. The, oh, the last thing I have to bring up, because it's on the agenda, is that there's something that has nothing to do with housing at all that we're gonna be bringing most likely to town meeting, which is a amendment to the DEP surface water supply protection provision. It would, it would actually add a new section to our zoning bylaw, which is a, it's a technical fix to require that public water supply sources comply with state regulations. Is that pretty much correct? Mr. Tucker?
Uh, yeah, yes. The proposed language would draw to the attention of anyone using the zoning bylaw as part of what they were doing on their property, the need to comply with state and local, the state regulations under the Department of Environmental Protection for what you can do, including land uses, within a certain distance of public water, water supplies, specifically surface water supplies, but also groundwater well supplies. And also within the, our watershed protection district, which is the district which is adjacent to the Atkins reservoir. And also any, to bring to their attention, any Amherst Board of Health regulations. Amherst must regularly renew its permits to operate public water supplies with the Department of Environmental Protection. And we have received a series of letters over the last couple of years asking that we improve our various regulations to comply with state, the state regulations. Previously, we had in fact made amendments to the language of the watershed protection district in terms of uses and, and coverage. Some of you will remember that, lot coverage and so forth. In this case, the regulations being referred to involve land uses and other activities which do not correspond in any exact way to Amherst's existing land use categories in the zoning bylaw. Some of them have, are agricultural, it's, it's a range of things. And rather than attempting to create new use categories in order so that we could regulate them appropriately under the state regulations, it was felt that what we could, what we could do for zoning, as opposed to Board of Health regulations, the most of the changes that will be associated with this will be Board of Health regulations, is simply to cite the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations that apply as amended in two places in the bylaw. And, and that's what this would propose to do.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Is there any public comment with respect to this amendment? Any comments from the board?
Some guys don't how to tell a joke.
Ms. Anderson?
It has nothing to do with the water.
No one cares about the water.
I know. It sounds good. Did I miss something? If, if we already have a rental registration such as it is, that's been on the books for a while, does it require a zoning bylaw change or an amendment to have a rental registration such as we're talking about? Can it just be an enhancement to the existing regulation?
Mr. Tucker?
If I may, again, I think I said this probably indistinctly earlier. The existing regulations are Board of Health regulations. And their intent was to create, at a minimum, a database of rental properties so that if public health and safety issues that the Board of Health would be authorized to address under state law arose, they would know where to find the properties. Those regulations would not appropriately, would not be the, the best foundation upon which to try and regulate and permit rental uses in, in Amherst. And nobody's proposing to do it under zoning. What we're proposing is to do this under the general bylaws of the town, the ordinances of the town, to create a, an entirely new section, just as there is a section on nuisance houses and open containers and, you know, keg registration and any number of the other pieces of dealing with issues or problems associated with, with rental properties in Amherst. So this would create a, a rental, would put the rental registration and all of the other rental permitting in the general bylaws and would not, it would not be part of the Board of Health regulations. It's not being proposed as part of the zoning. The kinds of amendments that you've seen and we've been discussing tonight are what would, would appropriately go in the zoning. Well, we'll decide whether they're appropriate or not, but they're...
And who is it that, if, if the other registration process is under the health, Board of Health, who, who would, what would be the agency that would be responsible for this?
I think we are, we are still intending at this point to keep that with the Department of Health, the Health Department.
Health?
Be the, be the regi, the focus of registration. But enforcement would be a, a shared responsibility, as we are currently conceiving of it. Mr., in many ways, Mr. Thompson's position is sort of emblematic of that. He can enforce both health regulations and building code regulations. And increasingly, we'll have a sort of a shared platform, if you will, so that anyone seeking to enforce these regulations would have the ability to do whatever it is they need to do under the various state laws to address what the problem is.
Well, I would just say, someone, I, I, maybe one of the members of the public or talked about, you know, putting together a committee to write the perfect form. And if there is such a group, I would offer to be on it, actually. Because I'm, I am, I'm a landlord in a Massachusetts town that has a regis, rental registration program. And matter of fact, my house is being inspected next week. I had forgotten that it had expired and the town let me know. And it costs $120. It's not a $10 thing. And it's, it's, if you comply, it's painless. So I have a little bit of experience with that. And it's not a, you know, and it's, and it is under the, this town has a licensing person on their staff, a license, what's called the licensing agent, handles all the licenses in town. And this is just another, it's a, you know, just a rental. And I have to display it. And it's all the things we heard about, you know, smoke, carbon monoxide, trash, sanitation regulations and, and, you know, I, so I would offer to help if I could, if we got to that, if, anywhere, wherever it's gonna be that drafts the perfect form.
Mr. O'Keefe?
I, I think that one thing we might be able to do, what, I've been thinking about this through the course of the evening in terms of how to expedite this process as best we can. And as I stated earlier, I, I don't think that it's reasonable to expedite it to the point of being ready in the fall. But it's important that we do work on it and make sure that it's ready for the spring, I think. And so it's been described several times so far tonight as something that's happening entirely within town hall, meaning within staff and not at the board level. And so I've been thinking, I've been trying to think of ways that this could involve the planning board and potentially other people as well. And then Sandy just offered a, maybe an entree into that. Like, one of the things that I was thinking of is maybe we could have a representative as part of that process or a liaison to that process. And it sounds like I just heard a volunteer to serve in that capacity. But that might be one way that we could be more involved in the drafting and, and discussions of this permitting system as it moves forward. That's just a thought.
I like that idea, Mr. O'Keefe. Perhaps we could start with a liaison and move, if necessary, to a full-blown subcommittee. With a, with a chairperson, of course.
How did that hand go up? Let me bring it down.
We would very much appreciate your help, Ms. Anderson, I know.
Well, you know, and I, and I worked, I had, worked at the university. I was 18 of those years were in housing. So, you know, I'm not unfamiliar with residential issues in the town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We, um, all right. This has been a very unconventional meeting. I feel like it's been extremely productive, though. Do we have any topics not reasonably anticipated?
No, I, I wonder if I could make a generalized suggestion that you do two things. One, decide whether or not you think the DEP amendment is workable in its current form. And perhaps if it needs any extra effort, send it to the zoning subcommittee. And second, if there's any triage to be done on the zoning amendments as currently proposed, that the board wants to inform the zoning subcommittee about, if we could focus on that so that their next meeting on the 25th, 15th, 15th, they'll know where to go with, with those amendments.
Well, let me ask this. Since you all have been present for the whole meeting, what do you all think we should prioritize? Last word? Prioritize. What should we prioritize? Any thoughts? I mean, we could sit here and rank them from one to seven if we want to. It's in pretty good order already. Single-family and duplexes at the top of the list, followed by converted dwellings, lodging and boarding houses, mixed-use, live-work-use, rental registration requirement, functional family definition. I under, some of the, understand some of these are sort of bound together by mutual definitions. Mr. Crowder?
I, I think we should, first of all, I think we should schedule a public hearing for the DEP thing. I don't, I don't think there's any reason to wait on that.
Agreed.
And secondly, I, we mentioned that, that we actually need to have a, a fuller discussion of functional... of functional family in order to proceed with some of these other things. So I think, I would like to continue working on single families and duplexes and converted dwellings as a priority. And the next priority, functional family definition.
Mr. Rosnoy?
A question. Do we have a, an actual request happening of Town Council regarding the moratorium question? And so we'll have to do that in the zoning subcommittee meeting for you to have information on it. I mean, has that decision been made that we are going to request that of the Town Council?
Do I see any heads shaking, no, we don't want to ask that question? So we're going to ask that question, the question is what question to question?
Yeah, I thought you phrased it well.
Staff were presuming that request was already made, so.
What I said.
Okay.
What you said. We can take it off the transcript if we have.
So that's a yes, yes on DEP public hearing and yes on query re-moratorium.
Mr. Rosnoy had a question. Will we have an answer before the next meeting?
If we do, I would think it would be on the ZSE agenda.
If we do, you will. We will certainly make the request quickly. As was just noted, some of the members of the board and both the staff who are here this evening were away for more than a week just recently. So that happens at Town Council as well, but we will pursue this.
Can I make another minor point?
Yes, please.
Regarding the water supply, is there no aquifer in the town of Amherst?
Oh, there absolutely is.
Oh, I would suggest maybe just adding that word in that first large paragraph.
That is addressed by, he said, looking at the language, surface water reservoir or a groundwater well.
Right, I'm concerned about groundwater well.
All of our groundwater, well, that's addressed here, it's addressed elsewhere in the bylaw, there's an entire overlay district that applies to our public water supply aquifer, which is the Lawrence Swamp area and DEP. We do not have from DEP any indication that what we're doing now transgresses any, in that area, transgresses any of their regulations, so.
Right, yeah, I understand. But groundwater well is different language than what I'm familiar with in other places where aquifer recharge areas are specifically identified. We don't use that language here. So I would just recommend throwing the word aquifer in there.
I'll take a look at that.
We do have a whole aquifer recharge protection zoning district in the southern part, southeastern part of town that has specific regulations that are already in the zoning bylaw.
Uh huh. Oh, good. Well, I would see that as further argument for including the word aquifer in this.
Is this designed to apply to aquifers?
This is responding to a request from DEP specifically about renewal of a permit for the Atkins reservoir as a public water supply. I don't think it applies to our two other public water supplies in Pelham, which have enough town ownership of land around them to prevent any such issues from arising. This is really intended to address surface water reservoirs as public water supplies and not aquifers. As Chris noted, we already have a fulsome, more than fulsome.
I haven't read the relevant regulations to see whether those regulations even apply to an aquifer, have you?
No.
That might be worth doing if you're proposing to add that word.
Right, by the time of the public hearing. Okay.
Ms. Kruger?
If we're done with the DEP, I wanted to get back to the other laundry list, but I don't want to, it's not about DEP, so. Just so that when, since the zoning subcommittee meets, then next planning board, so that I'm clear and maybe my own comment, the live-work issue, I just, I'm worried about getting distracted with additional bylaws and I think it has a merit and I support the live-work possibilities, but I wonder if we want to either just stick with adding a definition to the definition section or waiting till, I'm pretty confident we're going to come back to Village Center rezoning, hopefully sometime within the next year, and wrap it in the way we had before. So maybe that could just filter down as a lesser priority for now because of the urgency of a couple of things we're trying to do. And the boarding house, I'm still not convinced that we really need to look at the boarding house issue or make a change in that, which would leave us with the single-family home class one and two, duplex class one and two, and the functional family definition as the priority for our focus. Am I getting them all?
I think converted dwellings.
Right, and the convert, yes, the converted. Converted, yeah, which may be even one of the highest ones. I had suggested in our subcommittee that we look at the single-family class one and two and the duplex class one and two somewhat separately because I think they may draw out different issues, but we didn't decide. I would just, would help me if when we talk about the functional family definition before we meet again, if people could think of legitimate, real examples that either wouldn't fit that proposed drafted functional family or where the drafted language seems really intrusive or you're creating stipulations and standards for a group of people that you would really want to apply to a group of people living together. Because I thought of a lot of examples where I had some potential problems with what we were trying to do and it seemed straightforward, but it's really not. There's a lot of sensitivity about how you, do people eat together, do they prove that they eat together, do they buy food together? So I think there's actually, it's really a loaded kind of thing. You should be very careful in dealing with functional family. And besides, we're leaving out dysfunctional families, so it means not a necessary point.
I think that goes out to Amherst, but, Ms. Brestrop?
I was thinking that perhaps Building Commission, maybe not tonight because everybody's very tired, but he might be a good person to look to to examine whether these criteria would make sense and would be actually able to be enforced.
Absolutely.
Thanks for sticking around.
I know. We're the fun group.
Yeah, big points. All right, so what I heard now from Ms. Kruger is proposing to scratch from the list live-work use. Was there another one?
Boarding house.
Boarding houses. And is there any opposition to scratching those from the list? Mr. Crowder?
I think it's, it might be useful to clarify what a boarding house is, people don't really understand it. So at least the definition, maybe not changing the permitting, but leaving the definition part, part B.
There you go.
That seems workable. I don't see anybody shaking their fist. So at a minimum, we're going to scratch live-work use from your work list for the fall town meeting. Is that right? Any objections to that? All right, Mr. Tucker, you're going to have to continue to use, and Mr. Ma, you have to use, continue to use your crowbar for the live-work use. So keep it handy. We'll try to get to it in the spring. All right, moving on through the agenda, I don't see any A and Rs over there, is that correct? Ms. Brestrop?
This might be an easy one. It's an Amherst College property that's located on South Pleasant Street. It's down across from the golf course and Amherst College owns a very large piece of property there between the road and the Norwattick Rail Trail. And they would like to carve off the front of the property, which contains a single-family house, to be able to sell that property. They're divesting themselves of some of their single-family houses that they don't think can be converted into duplexes.
So they'll be bringing in ANR?
I have an ANR. They're right here for you.
Well, so this proposed division of land, the frontage that the house is on serves the house, in other words, that's where the driveway is and all the access and utilities and everything. There's nothing passing over the part that they're trying to divide off.
Okay, anyway, yeah, I can show you pictures of the property. This is the main property here. Here's South Pleasant Street, here's the entrance to the golf course, the Norwattick Rail Trail is over here. So the property, as you can see, stretches way back, it's got a lot of wetland in the middle of it. And Amherst College is proposing to carve off the front, a frontage lot with an existing house on it. And this is a more easily viewed picture of that. They're losing, no, the back property will not have any frontage.
It'll be landlocked?
It'll be landlocked, yeah. No, it's not a flaglock because it doesn't have, yeah, it connects to other Amherst land. Amherst College also owns this property here, I think, so.
Why do they need the handout?
I don't know.
They don't think that could be a duplex? It looks like the biggest house on the street there.
It might be able to be a duplex if the new owner chooses to convert it to a duplex, but Amherst College, well, Amherst College, apparently it's not in terribly good condition. And the houses that Amherst College has been working on recently have been houses that are in very good condition. So this particular house, they're choosing to not put any effort into and they just want to divest themselves of it? That's my understanding of the situation. I've only spoken with the surveyor, I don't, I haven't spoken with anyone from Amherst College.
Why does the GIS map show this already as a separate property?
Because, that's a very good question. The people from Amherst College came and spoke with the town assessor and he asked the GIS representative to create that as a separate parcel.
I'm not ready to sign off on this as ANR, to be honest with you. I don't understand what they're doing here, creating a landlocked parcel. I'm not sure that qualifies for ANR.
Well, they're not proposing to do anything on the back land. The only thing is that they're proposing to create this frontage lot. And if you don't, well, you can choose not to sign the plan, that's certainly within your prerogative.
More information.
They, you are, this is day 20 of 21 days and so it'll be constructively granted with, you know, if you don't sign it, it'll be constructively granted and they can take it to the registry and record it.
Or we can deny it and they can come back with a subdivision plan.
I don't think you can deny it. I think that...
We can. You can refuse an ANR, absolutely.
All right, I've never run into that situation before. I wish Mr. Tucker had not left. Where is he?
He's still in the building.
I'm going to go get Jonathan, just a minute.
I mean, I don't know, what does everybody else think? Am I overreacting here?
Can you wait for your discussion and I'm going to go get Jonathan?
I wanted to make, I wanted to make a comment, but it won't be in our minutes. Turn the microphone off. I don't, Jonathan, I don't know about this particular proposal, but as this came forward tonight, it made me think it's time to have a sit-down with Amherst College about their larger intentions because I think they do have a plan for what they're doing with their residential property. And we focus a lot on UMass and the college has not really sat down and talked to us from a planning perspective about what they're doing and we're getting it piecemeal by piecemeal by piecemeal.
Okay, I don't think Jonathan has seen this yet. This is an ANR that Amherst College is proposing. It's a big piece of land with a house on it and it goes all the way back almost to the Norwattick Rail Trail. This is South Pleasant Street and the golf course is right here. Amherst College is proposing to create a frontage lot and this lot would then be landlocked. But since they're not proposing to build anything on it, my understanding is that there would not be a problem with this parcel being landlocked. The lot that they're creating is shaped, it's kind of an odd shape. It's got a strip here and then this front portion here. They have filed an ANR and today is, I believe, day 20 of the 21-day period. And so we were discussing whether this would be constructively granted if the planning board did not sign it tonight. And my understanding is that it would be, but David is not agreeing with that understanding. And so I'm calling upon you to...
I agree with you, but I don't think it tells the whole story.
Okay, so I just hope that Jonathan will be able to add something to the discussion.
As you know, the ANR process is a process of endorsement rather than permitting. It's not an approval. It's saying, yeah, this layout meets the basic requirements under state law for the creation of a lot and meets, which include minimum frontage under our zoning bylaw, a minimum lot area and access to the property. If it has all of those, then it is a legal lot and you have the choice of endorsing it. And if there are some issues, if there were some problems, for instance, if there was...
I'll just stop you. My concern is that it's creating a landlocked parcel.
That is, it's not really landlocked since Amherst College owns both property to, with frontage to the north and to the south, which is contiguous with the parcel that would be created. Unless they sold them to different entities, that would not be an issue. If I may, this doesn't speak to any legal meaning, but Amherst College has tried over the years to acquire their view. If you go up to the War Memorial and look south, they try to own and control the majority of the view so that it doesn't change over the decades as alumni come back and continue to contribute to the future of the college. I do not see, one, this has substantial wetlands running through it, I don't see anything happening out there or the likelihood that anything might happen out there. In terms of this, I would recommend that you endorse it. If you have concerns with what Amherst College's plans are in the long term, I would ask them to come into a subsequent meeting or make overtures to those in their administration to say, we're interested in having a long-term dialogue with you about a number of issues. Could you come in and talk about your intentions over the future?
But you're saying that, I think that's great. You're saying that both of these lots comply with frontage and other requirements.
There's not...
As divided. That's all I'm concerned with.
What you can do, if that is of concern to you, as you could with our magic pen that works on acetate, is write on there an initial, not a building lot, on the rear lot. Because it has no access right now, as it exists, as proposed to be, as proposed to be configured, it doesn't have any access, therefore it would not be a building lot.
I think that's probably obvious from the fact that...
Actually, it says it on here.
Does it?
Not a separate building lot.
Okay.
Let's crunch that out.
Nice job, David.
Is there any interest in having them come in and talk to us about what they're thinking with all these conversions and divestments?
I think that's worthwhile.
I'll apologize to the board for my...
No, I thought so. We didn't know that it said that and you caught that point. I never could see it.
And this is interesting, too. I think that the configuration of this lot is not exactly as is shown on the GIS. So the GIS people are going to have to change that when they get this plan. There's no little flags.
You're closer than the amp here.
Does it say not a building lot?
Not a separate building lot.
Okay.
Teriyaki.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you very much for coming by. So this is different, they're making a trapezoidal...
They are, it's different from what's shown on the GIS. I'm sorry for misleading you, but that's what they showed.
Satisfied. Anyone down there want to take a look at the big picture? I'm going to go ahead and start signing. Okay, so...
Would you like me to run through the...
Do you mind?
Sure. Turning our attention to committee and liaison reports. PVPC, Mr. Schreiber.
No report.
CPAC, Ms. Anderson.
No report.
Agricultural Commission, Mr. Weber.
No report.
Transportation Plan Task Force, Mr. Rosnoy. ARA, Ms. Kruger.
No report.
Design Review Board, Ms. Ford. Okay.
Mr., I apologize, Mr. O'Keefe. Can I go back to PVPC?
You may.
On August 8th, there is a forum that's co-sponsored by PVPC. Basically, the CNN... Basically casinos. So the Casino Commission is going around to various sites. So August 8th, Springfield, I can't think of what time it is.
And I'll note in passing that our zoning bylaw does not include that use category for casino, so we might want to think about that.
Also, we did get the annual assessment from PVPC. Came in. The list is available somewhere. I think it was in our packets two weeks ago.
Ms. Kruger, did you have anything for Housing and Shelter Committee?
No, I missed their last meeting where they were meeting for that aid in the board's offices.
Okay. Ms. Brestrop, were there any upcoming ZBA applications that we need to be told about?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Upcoming site plan review or other business before the planning board?
There's a site plan review coming up that has to do with their rental property on South Pleasant Street. But this is for conversion of a house to an office, and they need to put in a ramp. So they'll be coming to see you about that. Okay?
I turn the gavel back over to you, Mr. Chair.
I'll take my, I'm part of your agenda.
Item nine.
The report of the chair is that I feel like tonight has been extremely productive in terms of narrowing the issues, and I thank everyone, including members of the public, for their help. Report of staff? We are adjourned.